Mr. Manyani, give me the meeting.
Thank you Seth. Evening everybody, it is Tuesday, January 24th. It's still up to 6:30 and we are about to start this Whiteboard meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and I have an acceptance of the agenda.
I'll move.
Second line was Cantfield, all favor.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous.
Who, whom I moved, Karen Candy, six seconds, Karen Candy.
Alright, before we start, I'd like to read this. The Situate Select Board is committed to providing an environment for respect during meetings. We ask all members to interact in a polite manner even when there is disagreement. We value the participation of our community. We want all participants, including marginalized and minoritized communities, to feel welcome and respected. We ask our community members, our committee members, and all who participate to commit to these standards to support and respect our community. Thank you. Before we start, are there any walk-ins this evening? I don't see any, so we'll move on to the report of the town administrator.
Evening, thank you. We'll start with our water updates. We're in pretty good shape, we're plus ahead of the reservoir. We're plus seven at the tack factory, so right now we have plenty of water. Average daily demand, 1.038 million gallons, last week it was 1.040, so better than about a million gallons a week. Ballpark that was normally in 2.29 inches of water last week in rainfall as a plant. The town of Situate, we are launching our Cituate Community Choice Electricity Program in March of 2023. This is the electric supply bulk program that the board approved several years ago, actually. Leverages the buying power of Situate's residential businesses. Provide competitively priced electricity options, longer-term price stability, and 10% more renewable content than required by the Commonwealth. Residents have already received their letters. Phones are ringing in the office, so we know people have gotten them. You will automatically be enrolled, although participation is voluntary. If you wish to opt out, there is a condom that will allow you to opt out. If you already have a third-party supplier, then you will not be affected by it, so you can stay with a third-party supplier. This does not change your national grid supply. National Grid will still do the distribution and there's been a new supplier on your bill. The website is up on the town website, it's the local town website, there's community electricity at the top, you'll get all your information. There'll be an information session on February 2nd at 2 o'clock at the senior center. And another at 6 o'clock at the library and the community room. The Chair of the Committee, Lisa Bertola, has also put an interview with Seth, our cable guy, on the website. So we'll continue to put information out. The big question we've had is, is this the whole bill? No, this is just the supply and distribution work made for National Grid. I'll get to Gatcha later on, the DPW sand pile is back. It's in the Egypt Beach parking lot, possibly Egypt Beach store parking lot. It's for residents only, please no contractors. So if you need to install the sand, please go pick it up. On the lighthouse, we're moving ahead with the bid documents, we're in the process of putting those together. The time of putting it out to bid by the end of this month. Determination has been made that the current lantern room is in such disrepair that in order to save it, you would basically have to rebuild. The base of the lantern's iron frame was severely corroded as we moved to lift the lantern from the tower. But we had hoped that the remaining iron frame in the lantern was sufficiently free from corrosion to repair and graft a new base onto it. Close inspection shows that much of the remaining iron frames are corroded and unsalvageable. You'd have to completely replace the corroded island, corroded island, which would mean you'd have to build a brand-new lantern room. So at this point, the woodwork and copper plating also requires complete replacement. The windows have PCBs in the caulking, there's also asbestos, so it's gonna have to be remediation for hazardous materials. So the recommendation, what will be in the bid, is that the current lantern room will be turned over to the contract. That he will use that as a template to fabricate the new lantern room. And then he will be able to salvage whatever salvageable from that and we'll get a credit back on our bill. We'd hope to find some way to save that, but in the opinion of the architect, you'd have to build a brand-new one to save. We don't want it, at that point, it's just far too expensive and not worth it. We'll continue to let people know the Situate Food Pantry is still looking for donations. They're in need of donations, they can't get from the Greater Boston Food Bank. Beef stew, canned ham, spam, hash, canned fish of all types, cookies, hot and cold, cereals, ornaments, and salsa. They can be dropped off at the Food Pantry, they can be dropped off at the Situate Public Library, Miller's Market, and Shaw's on 3A. Coal Parkway project, next week, we will start fencing off Coal Parkway, the contractor's spot. Fencing that off in preparation to bring in materials in to do the dock project. We have posted the new traffic alignment on the website. It's very similar to the traffic alignment that we had with the piling project. Right next to the gazebo, we'll be fenced off, we'll still be able to use the walkway. We'll have a new line of traffic going by. That project will be done in May, obviously, before voting starts. At that point, we'll have essentially a brand-new, regular, new docks and pylons, new electrical in the last couple of years, so that's a very good thing. I wanted to bring the board's attention and people's attention home that the superintendent and I, and I have received several calls relative to the condition of the lodge flag on the flagpole, the stadium field of the high school. The mechanism for raising and lowering that flag is currently broken. We've had the fire department come out of the ladder track, wasn't tall enough to reach. We've had several companies come out, that have either failed or attempted to draw just because of where it is and what it is. We have a solution in hand, we have a company that is going to come in, repair the mechanism, repair the pole, and take down the flag. What we're waiting, what we are waiting for right now is actually just some cold weather. For obvious reasons, we can't put the crane on the track. We try to put it on the landscaping that's there, it's just too soggy, too boggy. But we are hoping within the next week, we'll have some cold weather, we'll be able to get that out. We're gonna take it down, repair the mechanism, and then we will wait until the spring supports start to put a flag back up. So it's not up there on what they're just taking upon, nothing. But we are aware of it, it's just we haven't been able to get anybody out there to actually do the work and fix it. We did have a guy literally climb up the flagpole. Not something I recommend, but they were unable to fix the mechanism, so we'll have to have a crane to be able to do that. We also wanted to let people know, we've received several calls from residents about businesses advertising, the use of town properties for their business. So a skate park, where they would have skateboard, skateboard lessons at skate park, yoga on the beach. The other one we had this week was a dog training company that you could take your dog down to the dog park and then train your dog in the dog park. We do not allow full-profit businesses to use town property for their profit. If you have an idea that you think would be helpful or useful for people of Situate along those lines, talk to the recreation department, I'm sure that we will and happy to set up something for a skateboard program or something like that. We are getting a lot of calls from residents that they are seeing these businesses on Facebook advertising that they're gonna do this business using town facilities. We do not allow those, please do not advertise. If you do, we'll get a nasty call from us if we actually go and do a block decision. Insurance reasons, there's a lot of times, please, you can't do that, but we want to get people's eyes on it. Also, that time of year, believe it or not, with the snow, beach stickers go on sale February 13th, 8:30 in the morning. Non-resident beach stickers and Hummer Rock Only stickers are on sale online only, but I'm committing you cannot get them here. The sale goes live at 8:30. There will be no reminders, there will be no calls, there will be no get online and look hookup. 8:30, it goes live, last year, the non-resident beach sticker sold out seven minutes. So if you look like a non-resident beach sticker, you better be online, ready to go. Non-resident stickers, $300, Hummer Rock Only, $100, resident stickers, $35. That's what I have for this week.
Great, thank you Jim. Couple of quick things, just I've gotten several calls today, I'm sure many of them also about the Situate electric stuff. What I've heard is that the rate that they're offering is much less than what most people are paying currently, and, which is great. And the other thing is that remember that you are in that program if you currently have National Grid. So if you don't want to be in the program, you have to actually opt out of it. I think we all love the program, we didn't love that part of it, but in this case, it works beneficial for most people. If you do have a third-party one, if you're already with Constellation or somebody else, then you do not have to deal with this. They can't pull you out of your other third-party company.
Can I just point out that, isn't it ever-source as well for the Hummer Rock people or may not include it?
I believe this.
Okay, I just believe you said.
It's Marshall as well, too.
Okay.
But they're just a distributor.
No, I understand, but he said it's just National Grid, so should the Hummer Rock people?
Great, so ever-source and National Grid. And a quick translation, Jim is saying lantern room, what he's talking about.
Sorry, just don't understand. It's the top of the lighthouse, it's a top lighthouse the other day.
Any other questions for Jim? Yeah?
I have a clarification. Because of flooding on Coal Parkway, we, there's been a lot of activity on Facebook talking about that, that we don't seem to be doing anything. So I'd like to point out that what is happening, we say Coal Parkway and Marina, that is not what the Coal Parkway Redevelopment Committee is beginning to work at. That is something completely different. So just in case anyone thinks that all of a sudden we snap to it, that we've snapped to the arena, but the issue of flooding and Front Street and drainage, et cetera, et cetera, is complicated at best.
And a lot of the flooding is not actually Coal Parkway's the mobile area.
Right.
So a lot of the water comes directly from that place down.
And apparently, the water comes down from the hill into Front Street, into the drains down there. So it's more complicated than we think. So, and we're at the beginning of trying to figure it out.
Sure?
Just a couple of quick things. Just on the electric, I know that we've all done calls about this. One thing that people should be aware of is if you get this huge bill and you really have a, are having a hardship with it, you can work with the National Grid for a payment plan. Or you can call us at Situate Community Christmas, and they will walk you through a process if you really need assistance with those bills. I want folks to know that. A question, totally different topic, and you may not know this on the front end, but on the water usage. Normally, this coming year, don't we run under a million gallons? Are we, are we tracking higher right now?
Yeah, we say we're tracking higher this year than normal.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't.
It's usually, it's usually the 900 to a million range, so we're, we're right in the ballpark.
I was just saying, more, I mean, in the past years, our low, our low, our low watermark is like 800 to 900 thousand gallons.
Yeah, right around nine, you know, yeah, right in, right in, you know, nine to.
So are we trending higher, is the question.
About average, I, I would.
It's not alarming.
Not at all.
So unless you don't believe, but I don't know about, if you want to tell me somewhere, we're always open.
No, no, you just said that we're running over a million a gallon a day, so.
Typically, we get down to about a million gallons in, in, you know, in the winter. That's an area. Sometimes we'll even go down to nine, but it's, it's right in that million gallon range.
Part of it also, we've been using mostly well water. So they run the plant once a week and then they run that to waste. So they have to run the plant, keep it going, so they run it to waste.
Nice staying on D speed, perfect.
That's a lot of, that's a scuffle, right?
And you said you were gonna talk about Gatcha later, is that what they just?
Yes, because I have two slides on Gatcha.
Ooh, excellent, alright, I'll see you for Gatcha question.
Awesome, alright. Moving on to the next item. One of the fun things you get to do up here is recognize great employees that worked with a long, long time. And this is probably the longest, the largest number I've ever seen up here. So we have two 35-year of service recognition university awards to get out this evening. And the first one is for Danny Mendez in the fire department. And we've got Chief Murphy, that's gonna come up.
Who's that guy?
Who's that skinny guy? He's stuck with a mustache. That was, that was responsible for that.
That's Danny, that's Danny Junior, right?
Yeah, that's it.
Stephanie Dunn as well, too. So we had to congratulate Danny on 35 years of service with the Situate Fire Department. Danny's been a, his actual anniversary is tomorrow, 20th, since 1988, and the 25th. He has been an outstanding employee. Danny was, when he first came on, he worked the ambulance like everybody else until he got paramedics in. And Danny's been down at Hummer Rock now, stationed floor for at least 15 years, probably longer.
That's a big fight.
Oh, the fight looks like we're just going to school. So he's been down there quite a bit and holding our residents down there, taking care of them. So Danny's been a great employee with us. Danny's been on the dive team, as long as I can remember, been on 29 years, been on since that long. Danny's also helps out the state program. Our state program goes into the schools, kids in third grade, and does all the training, education for the kids, and he's very good with the kids. So Danny's been doing that for a long time, a firefighter, Sherry, her team. And Danny's also been a volunteer for our organ, our organ, the student memorial, memorial lake parade, special events, and forces sometimes at funerals. But Danny's been very active in our department. He's 35 years in the job, he comes in every day and.
He meant something.
He meant something. But I want to congratulate Danny at his time, he's not only a great firefighter, he's a good friend. We've been friends since we started, and Danny's a leader and mentor for others, so congratulations, Danny. Say a couple of words, too, they were all close together when we came on.
Yeah, I came on and Danny had been on Friday, when I arrived in 1989, I was assigned to the ambulance with him. And then throughout my career at the club stage, when I was fully lieutenant, I was assigned to Station Creed, who was my driver, all the state. Not all, but a lot of this right here is. Just jumping right here. I will, I've never seen anyone in my life come into the station and line up a firehouse like this guy can. He is a, he's a master.
That's one of my nicknames, yeah.
So Danny, Danny, when you need somebody, he comes in. He shows up at 3 o'clock in the morning, he shows up in the little storm, he's always there, he's the most, the one guy we can rely upon to show up. And when we, we call people, we're all the time, and Danny's always there for us. You know, I don't think anyone's worked more weekends in his career, no one will let him touch the amount of weekends that he's put in. He's made a lot of sacrifices. Again, we grew up together, now working together, small and tiny, but he's a great firefighter.
I just want to say that I'm, I feel like I'm blessed, I'm fortunate to get to become a part of this fire department. I don't think I would have done anything, if I didn't took any of my job career, I wouldn't have been as happy as I am now.
Thank you guys for the recognition.
Hold on, I think your chat, Moore, do you want to?
Do you want to start?
Yeah, do you want to say something first, do you want to?
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
We all, we all want to say something. I know, Danny, I just want to say congratulations, and you know, it's so important to have somebody with a personality like you in a serious situation, workplace that we work, and to keep the liberty there and to keep the energy going as well. So thank you for your dedication, staying with Situate for 35 years, because that's just amazing. So congratulations, and I, on behalf of the board, we have something for you, but I know the rest of the board members want to say something before I give it to you.
And I mean, all I, every year is kind and reliable, and that's such a value. I think it's misunderstood, there's, my sons will prove reliability and the kindness of your heart will just hear it. It's just fabulous to see you here, so just thank you.
But yes, it's a great shirt.
Well, I have to say, it's wonderful to hear someone say they're happy with their job. Really, no, it's great, I mean, it's, it makes for a much better place for everyone. And so, very happy spirit, glad you're not retiring tonight. So, well, I just, you know, 35 years, but congratulations on a, you know, a great career and looking forward to more.
Oh, thank you. Why don't I go and then I'll let you? Yeah, so for 20 years, I've seen you at hundreds of events, always with that huge smile, like Morris said, with this energy. But I've also seen you on the other side, where you clamp down and you're professional and you serve the town in such a great manner that, that really helps people day in and day out. So I think you're that great mix of both sides, where you got the energy, you got the funness, but then you also have the professionalism and the skills to help people in this town. You've been a great asset to the community, so thank you and please continue. For, like you said, 35 years, I don't know, it'll be Tom Brady number soon, but thank you for it.
Thank you for the tiny words.
Well, I'm editing as I think. I wanted to just to add to what the chair had said. I mean, we all know, and Danny's been frontline on some pretty hard things. And we cry, but you're there, and you help them, and so do we, he did. That's a good idea. So thank you for that. On the other hand, not only have you served us well on fire department, like you coached basketball teams. You're out there, you know, you were in these games and all the games, so you're, you are integral to the fabric of our community.
And you're Mr. Perfect.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for the great one, mom.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Danny. Thanks, guys. You making all the photos, Jim?
It is good.
So it's, it's not very often that we actually recognize two 35-year-old, 35 and 35-year-old, 35-year service anniversary awards on the same night. And Kevin Michaelwich from the DPW Highway Department is receiving this over as well.
Excellent. Danny, congratulations again, that's awesome. So Kevin Caffet, DPW Director, just, just imagine, January 25th, 1988, Kevin Michaelwich and Danny each started the job first time. Same day, 35 years, congratulations to the both of them. Isn't it? Rick Agnew had two good hires that day. So unfortunately, Kevin could not make it in tonight. His brother actually recently just passed away like two days ago, so he's, he's out. Mike Green was gonna come in also, but he was out till about 12, 12:30 last night. His eyes were hanging because they were standing again around 6, 5:30, 6:00 again this morning. So I told, you know, Mike's worked with him in the long, so I said, jot me down some notes and, you know, I know Kevin well, but he will be retiring very soon, probably at the end of the month. Kevin's decided to retire. Just for stats, and Kevin's a great guy, everybody that knows him, he's a, he's a gentle giant, big guy. He started the highway foreman's job in 2000. Mike estimated that he's fought over 350 snowstorms. I think he's done every St. Patrick's Day Parade Heritage Day since, since, you know, whenever they started, I'm not sure when that was. He figures well over 120 beach cleanups from storm wash. And he's gonna be deeply missed, he's, he was head foreman of that department, kept all the guys going. Guys really enjoyed working with him and, you know, it's gonna be sad seeing him go. You know, but good luck to Kevin going on in the future.
Thank you, Kevin, for saying that, and I'm sorry Kevin couldn't be here, something understandable. And just great dedicated employee. As we talk about the fire department, the DPW, goes through every storm is an adventure. And as you know, you get people on every piece of equipment we have and every sort of job we have. And he's been one of those stalwarts that has just gone through and helped anyone who can. We really appreciate, I'm sure you're not watching. Thank you very much for your service. Anyone want to add to that, or?
I just want to say congratulations to his partner. Can he come in at another time for your ladies?
I'm gonna be honest with you, he's shy.
Okay.
He's.
All right, I just wanted to put out.
You know, I don't, I, I, we were trying to figure out how to get him in, because when Mike Green came in, we told Mike Green, you guys had a big question on his budget and wanted to redo it. We were working it, we were gonna say, they got a question on your retirement, they're not gonna let you retire unless you come in and get all squared, okay? All set, but then Mike called me, don't tell him that, tell him he's all set, so.
Well.
I don't know, I don't know if I can, we can't get him in, but I tried.
Okay, well, maybe one of us can come down and give this gift to him in person when he comes down before he retires? Because I think that will be nice, I'm happy to do that.
Right.
So just give it to you to give.
Excellent, thank you, appreciate that.
Say thank you to him personally.
Great.
Is that right?
Thank you.
That was great, thank you.
Awesome. And before we go to the next topic, we get some other guys, they're here five years, Ching Goodrow.
So, Liz? What's going on with you, Danny?
He seems like 10, right? He's gone 35.
We want to give you a little cheek tip here.
I raised my pride, feels like five minutes, all but underwater.
Just feel like dog years. Alright, thank you Jim for all your service and lasting the first five years. Alright, now we are still at the fire department, our next discussion is accepting a donation. Chief, uh, chief, I don't know. What, what, Mike? Thank you. We're, we're asking the board to accept a donation that we get annually from the Pet Facility adjusted mall in Martinelli. Every year, the generous, they donate a thousand dollars to the fire department. We allocate this money at their request to the dive team, the dive emergency equipment. So we're very appreciative, they're always supportive, and they both live in town, and it's just great. Businessmen also good friends of the department, so. Great, I thank them. A thousand dollars, and then again, go into the dive, dive team supplies and correct the data for this. Great, and he, um, he's a great coach that gets in baseball, and a great, great family in town, and very generous, clearly, and helping, you know, and supporting me. So thank you guys for your donations. Every year, they step up some. Please.
Move to accept a thousand dollar donation from the Pet facility, and charge the justice fees for aside personal equipment for the fire department.
Sacked goodbye to Mr. Goodrich, all favor.
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
And up the next one's there, you're straight. Thank you.
Bye, John, thank you.
Who's gonna do the dog park one?
Lisa.
Oh, and see you over there. Lisa, come on up. It's been a while.
I know. We're still trying to get that small dog park built. So yes, as you all know, we initially planned to build a large dog park and a small dog park. Had to table the small because of finances. Last April's town meeting, we received an additional, almost $30,000 from the CPC. And the Standard Foundation has, is also going to award us an additional $37,000 towards this project. So because the town had to go back to the architects to get the bid process going, we are offering to donate to the town $14,630 to cover the cost for those expenses so the job can go up for bid.
Great, and that's from those two sources.
This is from us, this is from our fundraising.
So the 30s, that, those two will be in construction?
Yes, and, and if the bids come in slightly higher than what we have from the two grants that we received, we have additional funds that we are willing to contribute to make it happen this year.
Awesome, great. Anyone want to, have any comments?
I just say, say thank you, I mean, we still stay engaged in this, I think you have now.
No, I don't live in such.
Yes, so many more. Thank you for that passion and continued to follow through. If you got, if you have $15,000 sitting there to donate, you guys better reach out, you know, it's amazing money for this, so thank you.
Thank you, thank you, we appreciate the support from all of you.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to say that I know that the townspeople greatly appreciate it when people who have a project and want to get it done, and they come to the town to CPC or to, you know, they're willing to put their money into it. So, you know, it's people like you who we like to point out to other applicants for town money that to the extent you can help with the fundraising, it really is appreciated. So thank you, and it's great to see, it's, it's always busy.
It is, it is, yes.
Yeah, I think it's been, it's been a great addition to the town.
So I pray there once a week. And one of the, the most wonderful things, it's not just folks, and I love this to form Situate.
Right.
It's folks, Norwell, and Iowa's, I guess, it's Restoronic. They go, but they go all around town and other places. One of the best ways for folks to learn more about the town is like the, the attraction, it just brings folks together.
Right, and it builds community, there's, I've talked to so many people who have like really expanded their friend group through, through the dog park interactions that they've had, so it's nice.
Well, thank you very much, as Karen said, there's always a bunch of cars there and a bunch of people having fun in the park. So I think when we started, we didn't know building, they will come type of situation, and they came, so good, good job. And then the small one's gonna go behind it.
Yes.
Kind of behind the parking lot area back, back where they're looking.
Directly behind the park in that area, you know, stretching back towards the wind turbine.
Great. Kevin, please.
Move that the select board accept a generous donation of $14,630 from the Friends Institute dog park in order to finalize design and bid for the construction of a small dog park.
Excellent.
Second line was current, further discussion? Second, my name's Karen. Further discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye in unanimous. Thank you for coming in, thank you for your hard work. Give it to Lorraine.
Lorraine, okay, thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Aye, Lisa.
Thank you, Lisa.
Next topic, surprisingly on time, is reviews and discussion of some budgets. And the first one I'm gonna discuss tonight is conservation and cultural resources. Come on up. That is, what's everyone? Hi, how are you? There you go. So we'll start off, what we like to hear is, we've read the stuff, so you don't need to go. But tell us, like, couple of your real accomplishments and a couple of things that you're hoping to do next year. Like kind of operationally, and then we can gather those outcomes.
Okay, well, I mean, our accomplishments are is that we kept up with the thirty percent increase in permitting uptick this year. So that was quite an accomplishment, you know, balancing the needs of the permitting level and along with the day-to-day traffic and enforcement cases that we get along with the open space. So yeah, just balancing the needs of the town and the customers that come in, so it went pretty smoothly, so we're pretty proud of that. So that was, that would be our accomplishments. Challenges is that, you know, it's a two-person office, so our budget is reflective of the salary just for the office salaries and then our office supplies, so.
Anything like moving into the next fiscal year that you're hoping to do, change, improve, need?
Well, for, I mean, for, we've been on the facilities list for office based improvements. I mean, it's, if you've ever been in our office, it's desperately needed, you know, it's, we don't have a place to lay out our plans, to help people. You know, it's kind of like immediately one-on-one with the, you know, the clerk, we walk in, there's no separation. So we've been in discussion with the facilities about that. We're on the list, but we're just not prioritized above, you know, so. I'm sure they'll get to it at some point. So if we can rearrange the office, we've created, we've been thinking about that. So filing and storage, that's something that would be, you know, a project that we consider for sure.
Um, staffing, I mean, everyone could do staffing, but how's, how would that serve the town?
So staffing, I mean, I put it on as an item that we've identified. When I started six years ago, we had staffing for a couple of years, you know, we had the past full-time agent who was part-time for a few years. He helped with, you know, he was familiar with this town, you know, helped with ongoing enforcement. So that was a huge help getting the republic running and, you know, the list of usual suspects and that type of label and. So that's tremendously helpful for a new person in the town for sure. But, you know, the commission, we haven't exactly decided what the position would look like, so we did not put in more this year. Batted it around. I mean, I personally think that from like higher level management type things, it may be, you know, deeper dive things are probably, you know, that can't be totally focused on because you're just moving the paper. Because we do get so many applications and we're just keeping it going. So it's, it's really like, it's more like the building department where we move departments, you know, we get them and we we pretty much need to review them and get them out and get, keep it going. We've got strict deadlines with the Wetlands Protection Act and, you know, our local bylaw. And so we need to keep things moving with our deadlines and so on, so. And and obviously we want to keep our customers happy and keep people informed and, you know, keep people up to date with what's going on. Yeah.
Fraser, let's repeat what Amy said, but the filings are, are getting more complicated on the front. We, we have a lot of resource areas, this situat, you know, weapons, you know, pools, coastal issues. So they tag on a number of things and the projects can get complicated. And there's members to follow up with all those things, and then all the different regulatory agencies that get involved and weigh in on this. It takes some time to get through some of these projects. Some are very simple, some of these intercepting systems, coastal wetlands, you know, put up the silsack. Have a good day. But others can get very involved, projects like sitcoms and different things, just get very complicated. And then most of the review comes from the staff and then the commission members trying to stay up to date as well. But Amy's, what do we have, that's, it's like two sides of the commission in my mind. There's the regulatory stuff, the permitting that we have, and then there's the open space, the coastal pieces. It's great to have core on board, you know, this beach nourishment, this beach grass, there's all those sort of things. And then we've got all the forests now, and we just get folks who are working with the grant on wood, you know, surveying our forests. But there's a whole bunch of programs with like carbon storage and things that we could get into, which would be very environmentally positive. For example, we have towns like for our environment, and but they're also towns, and you know they're expensive, and they require grants. To have the time and the know-how to get those, do those things, it would be helpful to, like the things to figure out which way do we go with some of this. So then we still have, you know, there's a number of people that just don't care, especially the enforcements and, you know, people that we could condition the project and then you go out there and it's like, what, what's this thing gonna be, you know, and it eats up time.
Right, well, and I think also, I, I mean, I see the writing on the wall a little bit with the agencies and it's the higher level, the EVO reviews on sort of the bigger projects, that natural heritage could, could come into play as we go on into, you know, the future here, that, you know, conservation commission will be playing a role in that. I know by law and partner with the town partners with them, but it wouldn't be surprising to me if you were asked to also be in contact as well and part of a role, so.
One of them, we chose a third party to always see the conservation restrictions on the community preservation property. One of the entities that we discussed doing that with us was the Moon Forest Foundation. We chose Wetlands Trust instead. Moon Forest Foundation does a little bit more with maybe working forests and things like that. They just got a thirty million dollar grant from the USDA to look at carbon storage and just how do we manage our forests and woods to better our environment. And, and, you know, a few other different things, we could, we could look at doing some of that. We have enough property here and the ability to get involved with some of that, clean up our brooks and streams for better fisheries. You know, we got some money from Tall Brothers, but that's kind of like the stock. And those are big, those are a big deal.
Great. Just need to slow development down a little bit so we can.
Well, we need to, it eats up the time, so that's, hopefully we can figure out a way that we can get some of those things done.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, it just kind of sounds like you're treading water, really. And which I don't think is a good place to be, you know. I was talking to Andrew the other day, just like driving around and seeing all the forests just falling down. What are we doing about that? What are we gonna do to drive by all our town properties? There's so many trees down. And I don't know where that falls, does it fall in conservation, does it fall in DPW, it's in combination? But to me, it doesn't seem like between your board, we're all volunteers, and the small office, that we really have the bandwidth to be proactive, be doing what a conservation office really should be doing besides pushing permits.
It would be nice to be able to do that. I mean, one of the simple things, we see all these trees down. The way to not release so much carbon is basically if those trees could be turned into wood, it's furniture, either building materials or furniture or something like that, then it doesn't deteriorate. Granted, that uses some, you know, some fuel, but fossil fuel, whatever, but, you know, firewood is renewable resource. It's pollutant, but it is a renewable source, the oil and everything being sourced, so we can, we can do a lot of different things. But again, and there's money out there to get it, but administratively, it takes a fair amount of work. I don't know if we're treading water, but we're swimming pretty fast to keep up with the, uh, the flow coming in, you know.
Not a lot of downtime, which is good, that's a pro. As Jim said, it's gonna be busy. I agree with that.
Sure.
But.
It would be nice to.
Is it work or is it like really work that's, I mean, I know it's necessary work, don't take me wrong, but.
But we have a comp, I mean, we've got access into our properties now, people are using them more, we're, I think it's still a lot of the things that.
They look great, trails look great, we've all, you know, finally to be able to access everything along the west end, parking, so. Definitely made a lot of progress, but to your point, took you a long time, right? Because you didn't have resources to dedicate to it. Poor Penny's grabbing all over the place.
Thank God. If she's not getting it done, she's bugging us to make sure we do it.
Uh, yes, it's.
This is a problem.
Yeah. It's just this whole office, I think we've looked at it for many years and I, I know. In my opinion, I've never thought this off, this one, the staff, enough, between you and planning, like just the whole enforcement, planning and permitting. I just feel like we're short a lot of it.
So I guess I wanna kind of dig in a bit more on this enforcement and how much it's an issue because I probably haven't worried about anything else about whether or not our project is just going well, that someone is doing it right, or hey, this is not gonna die under anyone doing their job, probably not. Do you think that we're missing some folks probably doing something wrong, but we're not enforcing enough, or maybe we're not enforcing the right areas?
Yeah, definitely, we're not enforcing everything for sure. You can't get everything. Yeah. Yeah, we're picking and choosing our battles at this point, for sure.
How, I guess, how bad are the problems? Should it keep you up?
Should it keep you up or should it keep me up?
I mean, I mean, seriously, I mean, is it like this is, this is really bad or this is? I'd be that nervous, but I mean, if it's really, this is, these are big projects, these deals, and I don't want all of them gone.
The egregious violations, we're certainly going after, you know what I mean? The ones that are impacting water, you know, threatening water supplies or ocean plumes, you know, we're not letting those go unnoticed or unfined. That, you know, I mean, we're going after those certainly. There's some buffer alterations, you can't get everybody that's going into the bragging, he's just chopping it down at every point. And then, and then there's people down along driveways, private property, I mean, we're not gonna go down, you know, look, we can't just go down and look for things if you don't, we're not brought onto the property, I guess you could say.
We're, we're hitting the bank robbers, but we're probably not hitting all the speeders.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, we're, I guess, as my dad would say, we're doing the best we can in some respects with the staff that we have. I mean, we're, like, I'm not going and peeking at people's backyards, but if we get a report, we respond for sure. You know, the state gets calls, they call us, we follow up on it. You know, a lot of times people, you know, you'll see something happen and it's actually a commended project. They actually do have permits, but maybe they just haven't followed the steps to make it look legal. You know, I mean, like they'll blow off putting up the sign with the silsack or something like that. That happens quite often. And, and, you know, the thing is about situat is we have so much area, which again goes back to need for staff, but we are responsible for so much because it's all the land subject to coastal storm flowage. So that's a lot of situat, right? And then it's also all buffer to DPW, so that's everything inland. So that's, that's, and so that's also all pummeled up, so it's, I mean, that's a pretty good amount of area that we touch.
Yes, of course. I do. Um, we were listening to the planning board a couple of weeks ago, and they seem to have a backlog of permits that need to be done, enforcement actions that they're concerned about. And since, it seems to me as though it's kind of a similar type of business that you might be in, that I'd like to suggest that perhaps the conservation commission and the planning board share an enforcement officer and have the enforcement officer do all the follow-up that needs to be done and to take the actions that need to be taken and to keep following up. Because I think we might send a letter and then it kind of, you know, drops into the, forever everything drops into. But I, I think that, and it's possible the position could pay for itself. And then free up the people who want to do and are capable of doing the work of finding, you know, new projects, participating in things that are beneficial to the town. So, I mean, CPC alone has bought, acquired over four hundred acres of land. And that land, granted, we have Wetlands Trust, hopefully that's coming through, you know, to help us with making sure that the conservation restrictions are being adhered to. But we still, I think, need more help, and I would like to think that if you guys, if the two departments could share an enforcement position, that might be, you know, a way to start.
Well, we'll talk about that at the end. I think everyone's got their notes down and will, you know.
Well, I'm just saying, I guess, my comments.
No, 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 I'm just saying, I think, I'm thinking, we're all thinking, when we talked about a couple of other boards, but I think that's, at the end, we'll chew it up and see what we think. Karen, did you want to add anything?
No, I think you guys got a word. So there's nine to have, but thanks for.
Great, well, thank you for coming in.
Yeah, I, I thought about this a passable bit. There doesn't seem to be any money in the conservation commission budget for maintaining the parking access areas and the trails. I'm not talking all the trails, but at least the parking access areas. And then some of them, they're just by, by nature get beaten up and toppled, and that's what it's like. So I'd like to ask you, is it possible, and Jim, to put in a small amount of money into conservation commission budget to, in particular, maintain those access points? We've spent a lot of money and are still spending money on creating the access points, but if they're not in good shape and they're only, they'll only get worse with the blocks. So I'd like to see if we can fund that to the turn of around ten thousand or something. I think that would be helpful. CPC can't pay the maintenance, it's not in the highway or DPW budget as far as I know, so just knowing that.
Again, put her on the list, that's what we're all, we'll all talk about it.
We can, we could use some money for that.
Yeah, Karen, I.
But we'll also talk, it may be DPW that it goes to as well, so.
Right, I, 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 blind brought it up, Karen, I, we actually been thinking about that also for a while now and I mean, I've observed other towns and how they handle that. Norwell, for instance, they make it a capital request item. And although it's not like a slam dunk on the town floor that they want to give the money, in fact, Jim knows how it goes, but like, I think last year they brought in four hundred thousand dollars. And then they could maybe, part of the pushback was they weren't sure they wanted to give it to conservation commission to manage, so I'm not sure what happened, but I mean, that seems like a lot of money, but.
And we've been fortunate, you know, DPW, these departments have helped us, and we can tap different folks for private, so there is already cooperation and, you know, just looking for materials. Mike, Sean, Kevin, have been, you know, helpful. Get us a couple willows if we cross this material or something like that, but it's, you know, you're, you're, they have their own things to deal with initially.
Right, yeah. But they're getting a lot of use, like we're documenting that they're definitely getting a lot of use. I wouldn't be surprised if, if in the next five years, we're actually back saying that we should increase the size of the lots. You know what I mean, with some locations, so.
Different practice used constantly. Driftway Park is used constantly, and we have to, this is another place that we, we have to adhere this there, this, patch it up a few times, but... So we're working at some of those, and we've got to find other Driftway parks. Great.
On, on the Driftway Park, we're trying to leverage some of the things the planning board does where development, Driftway has to have a public combination, so we're trying to leverage some of that to take money and put it towards the Driftway Park, so it's, uh, developing, so...
Awesome.
Thank you.
Your, uh, your budget is, um, last year was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars, this year two hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars, as he mentioned. It's just salary for the most part, and, uh, you know, under five thousand dollars worth of technical services, supplies, all that sort of stuff. Thank you both for coming in.
Thank you.
And as Karen alluded to, we've got a list of stuff that we're gonna talk about at the end, and, uh, and figure out how we wanna get some feedback from Jim.
Right.
And we appreciate all the cooperation everywhere, okay?
Yeah.
And she's been trying to guide me down the road of keeping my slipster.
Is that a nice way of saying I'm harassed, you're right?
All right, it's perfect.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Uh, next one is zoning.
Well, you have, um, coastal resources as well.
Oh, I know, I'm sorry.
It's not, it's not budgetary.
But she wants to keep it up there, but she does such a good job. Who do you got in there, other thousand dollars for the, uh, eight, four, five, seven?
Wow.
Hey, Cory.
Hello. So, yeah, I, my salary is tucked under the conservation's budget, um, so I don't have any other items in that project, so... But basically, um, basically what I do is I initiate coastal resilient city, what has mitigation plans and studies, in collaboration with other town departments, planning, conservation, DPW. Um, and then I work to implement the rapid mitigation on some of those plans, um, so Pier Forty-four, Old Parkway Development, Community Artisan, things like that. Um, look for funding, obtain grants to implement, um, some of those plans and projects. I also work to maintain the town standard and national fund insurance program with BIMA, and implement the year gap activities, um, that follow the community banking system, uh, and making our standard in that program, which results in a fifteen percent discount and fund insurance for youth communities. Um, and then I also represent individual homeowners to obtain, um, immigrant grants to help elevate their homes and provide, um, educational, uh, material, um, and so how to deal with flooding and, um, resources that are available to those.
Great, um, any questions for Cory? We see you so often, we know that we're all on a great study, so, and did you just get another grant, is that what Jim said?
Yes.
And was that the Pier Forty-four one?
Yep, yep, uh, from the Metro Call, who, um, Plan Commission, three thousand dollar battery.
Awesome.
Thank you.
She's been great to work with, and she's gonna fix Old Parkway flood all by herself.
Yeah.
Yes.
I also try, look to the end, or whatever we do, something, but she's been great dealing with the committees that I've worked in, so thank you all.
Great, Cory, thank you very much, thanks for the summary, and keep up the great work.
Thanks.
Wanna do EDC, is Bob coming, or?
He's coming.
Okay.
Plugging those together.
Okay. The next, uh, next one's a zoning inspection, so they'll... That is one seventy-six.
I think that EDC is coming.
Okay.
When I was little. Maybe during, during this, yes.
Do you want me to give you a quick update for EDC's budget?
Yeah.
Um, sure, yeah.
Um, it...
Hold on, let's get there, one eighty-two, one eighty-seven.
So, uh, county's, uh, operation is correct, uh, the chair was close, otherwise the agent would not make it tonight. Their budget is funded by twenty percent of the estimated meals tax, which gives them, um, potential budget of forty-six thousand dollars, if that's what the board decides. Um, they're working for Facebook Twenty Four on a grant program, similar to what, uh, Community Preservation has, where entities with a grant that will meet certain parameters that they're working on, and then they will rely on whether or not they would apportion part of their budget to support that entity. Um, it's currently being reviewed by town council, the town council's reviewing it with the Department of Revenue because of the need amendment. And as soon as he's ready, we'll be providing that back to EDC, and then they'll take their vote to the Turbative Development Program for Twenty Four.
Great.
That was a great fellow, wasn't it?
Does this, um, uh, budget revolve, or is it...
No, we close it out every year.
Close it out every year, okay. Um, Karen, do you wanna?
No, I'll just say that, you know, the work that, to, to make this grant program, I think it's gonna be really, um, hyperactive funding, potentially even reliable funding, but, I mean, rather than just, we're talking and saying, I think we're really, you know, really officializing it, so they can anticipate the work to come on that, um, yeah, that's the biggest, uh, this is a very active, and we're just, uh, interested in this, so...
Great, and the grants are for individuals that have specific community projects?
So, let's see, we can then describe it, yeah, it's, it's, there's, there's a, it's established criteria that is being hashed out right now, and, um, it will have further economic development in these goals, which are just very economic development. Um, and it'll, it'll be specific, I think, so, um, the, the goal is, for the most part, is to create seed money for things that don't get started, not to plant something every year, it needs to be something muted, well, that, that isn't the criteria, and then that, it should be, um, robust and, I guess.
Awesome, any other EDC questions? All right, Bob, perfect timing. Great, evening, everybody.
Nice to see you.
Back on one seventy-six now, which is the zoning budget.
Very good. So, it's relatively easy to talk about, uh, the zoning budget, um, most of our expenditures are for salary. We are level funded, oh, thank you. Most of the zoning department's expenditures are for salary, we're level funded for the year, except for contractual, uh, call increases, in that respect, looking at numbers here, but I don't think anything else really has moved very much, but...
Yeah, so we're, first, we're covering that. The first one doesn't have a thousand, it's just the, the ZDA budget, which is even, just part-time salaries, right?
That's right, um, we have one half of a, uh, senior clerk position allocated to the ZDA.
And, do you wanna talk about any initiatives or any, or anything from the ZDA before we get any inspection budget, which is your, all your salary, or...
Right, well, the ZDA, as you all know, um, basically covers appeals from, from, um, citizens wishing to, uh, do projects that may need relief, and we hear probably an average of five or six a month. And that's generally steady, we haven't increased our workload too much in that regard. Um, the other very major thing that the zoning board of appeals is associated with is Forty B projects. And we have, um, sort of seen the Forty B at Haringburg, um, wind down this year successfully, and, uh, that's now being tendered down, so the zoning board's part of that process is pretty much behind them. Uh, there's a new Forty B, and I'm sure that board knows this, but, uh, on Old Open Bucket Road, the cottages at Old Open Bucket, twenty-four single-family units, that's now in the process of public hearings and permitting. And we hope that the final public hearing is gonna occur, uh, next month for that project. There may be one more, but this could be the last. So, again, that will be, um, a successful closure to that, that effort by the zoning board. Pretty much what we've been concerned with, there's been, um, a fair turnover in zoning board membership. We have some excellent new blood on the board, and, uh, look forward to that. Uh, the chairmanship has been taken over by George Peeksis, uh, and Anthony Lucchieri is, once this Forty B is concluded, looking to retire, I guess is the right word, uh, and we're very thankful for Anthony's many years of service and, uh, greatly missed. Uh, but George is also an attorney, which is very, very good for the general tenure and knowledge and background of the board, so I think we'll be in good hands going forward.
Great, and most of the fees are paid by the applicant in terms of project stuff, so...
Fees are, fees are all paid by the applicant, so that's, doesn't need to be overlooked.
Any questions on the ZDA budget? Which, um, last year was twenty-six thousand eight hundred, and this year is twenty-eight thousand three hundred. Again, just part-time, overtime salaries and some supplies. All right, let's go to inspections then, which is, uh, two forty-one.
So, the inspections department, um, has increased our budget request slightly. Again, most of the line items are level funded, um, the regular salary line item at the top has increased. Again, that's a contractual increase, and, uh, about one point five percent. And so, uh, the other part-time increase, which again is relatively substantial, but reflects, you've taken on one additional inspector, part-time, and to be used only as needed for, uh, plumbing and gas fitting inspections. Uh, so, this will give us two outside inspectors in each of the areas, building electrical and plumbing, gas fitting. Um, number of inspections we're projecting may increase somewhat, and that's reflected in this approximately eleven thousand dollar increase in the rest for that line item. Uh, the expectation is that would be more than offset by the actual fees charged. You don't get an inspection unless you pull the permit, you don't go full permit until you pay the fees. So, as this, as this generates more inspections, it's expected to generate an increase in fee revenue, uh, compensating for it. Uh, so that's basically what we're talking about in terms of changes. The department accomplishments, I guess, I'd like to talk about a little bit. Um, we've moved forward in our permitting software, so that now all of our permitting is done online. Uh, up until this last year, building permits were done on paper, and, uh, all of the input and background and documents that go with the building permit came to us in hard copy, paper form, and we were just, uh, well, in our typical situation was we couldn't bail out a filing cabinet's fast enough, and yet get these, get the stuff out of the archives. Um, so we had room in the filing cabinets full of this, you know, coming in, like a never-ending stream. Um, it's, it's unbelievable the change that this is generating. Now, now no longer break fingernails trying to get jackets out of filing cabinets. Uh, we really have increased the in-office paper load at all because of the electronic input, forget it. I haven't had to generate more boxes for the archives, and it's just, just a lot, a lot nicer environment in, in many ways. Uh, in addition, we've been able to, uh, dial in the rest of the department's, uh, conservation, planning, border health, in the permitting and approvals process, uh, and that's done relatively automatically, and so, uh, we've got a lot better handle on exactly what's being, uh, reviewed and what's being approved, what still requires approval from the various departments, and that's a huge, huge benefit. Um, an interesting thing is though, although we're generating more in terms of number of permits, our projections for this year for those, for total, uh, in, uh, total fee, uh, income, are down a little bit, uh, simply because we haven't had the huge projects, the Drew Project, the Haringburg Project, that, you know, have benefited us in the past couple of years. It's not to say that won't happen, uh, certainly, uh, cottages at Old Open Bucket will be, uh, substantial in terms of fee revenue, but, uh, we don't have anything enormous, that's, that's on the horizon. Um, we continue to move forward with, uh, the digitizing of the archives, the money was approved a few town meetings ago, and very honestly, because of COVID, because of staffing, because of just a lot of work, we haven't pushed forward with that as quickly as we, we ought to. But the basic reason is that we need to integrate however that works and however it's going to be done with our new software. And we've just about gotten to the point where we digested the possibilities and operations of that new software, the privatized software. And so now we're, we're kind of ready to start seeing where we go next, and one of the places we go is through this archive, archive endeavor. So, that's, that's gonna go forward as well.
And just to kind of monetize that, the budget, just to get the numbers, there's not a lot of line items, but, um, last year it was three hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars, this year it's three hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars.
Right.
That additional part-time stuff, the revenue, um, was close to a million, historically a million and a half, more point two, it should be projected to a million. So, uh, we talked about the plumbing and gas permits of eleven thousand dollar budget, we do about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in those permit fees, so...
Right, right, you know, and the way this is projected, again, as you know, is that you can take a look at the fiscal year that we're in now, which is only, uh, four twelfths, or five twelfths perhaps, but take that number and project it out, and then, then you're still looking at the year after that.
Right.
So these projections are pretty loose.
And like you said, in your area, you never know where the next big development's gonna pop off, it could really sway those numbers one way or the other.
Right.
Any questions for Bob?
Yeah, just a question, do we charge enough for our various apartments? It's, is it, it's a topic that seems to come up occasionally, um, and that there are, you know, standards that are...
Uh-huh.
And how do we compare to other towns, and I'm not trying to gouge anyone, but just like to make sure that we're charging the appropriate amount to the various apartments that we issue.
Absolutely, excellent question, and it does come up, um, and, you know, in our office as well. Uh, we charge eleven dollars, two thousand dollars, construction cost, um, that's very much aligned with surrounding towns, and we've checked. You know, we made that change from ten dollars to eleven dollars, I wanna say, what, two years ago perhaps, maybe three, uh, early recently. And before we made the change, we did a pretty good survey, and we, we kept in touch since to make sure that that's still, um, kind of right, right, right in the ballpark. Uh, the other thing, of course, is how do you figure the construction cost? Under, for many projects, I guess I would say for most projects, we're given a construction cost by the contractor or the owner, that, that represents a contract that's in place, you know, the project's actually been bid or, or proposed, and, and that's the cost, and that's, that's fine. Uh, there are projects that come to us that don't have... There are projects that come to us that don't have, well, they have to have an associated cost even just to, just to apply for a permit. But sometimes a project will come to us frankly, and we look at it and say, you know, that, that construction cost appears arbitrarily low. And in that case, we have standards that we apply, which are still very low, but most often give us an increased base of which to, of fee, fee requirement. So our cost for reconstruction, for example, is at a hundred and fifty dollars per square foot of living space, seventy-five dollars per square foot for a garage or workshop space, twenty-five dollars per square foot for an open deck. And so if we think there's, right, if we don't think what we're seeing is realistic on the application, we apply those numbers to generate a construction cost and to generate permit fee from that cost. And again, I think that's pretty well in keeping with other towns around, you know, around that we've seen. And we, we do talk about that with the other building inspectors, more while Cohasset. Bob Egan, for example, the building commissioner at Cohasset for many, many years, is now one of our part-time inspectors here. So we've got a good pipeline to what Cohasset's been up to.
Right. Think any of us would take a developer who would charge those fees that you just mentioned, so.
I would certainly love to find somebody who actually built something for a hundred dollars, a hundred and fifty square foot.
Did you have a question?
Just one comment, I, in your goals, you talk about reviewing some of the zoning bylaws. And I just wanted you to be aware that in the next cycle of populating committees, we're going to stand up the bylaw review committee again.
Mm-hmm.
So that will be something that, you know, once you've got to be on work, that just be aware that there's that step is going to be next year before we do this now, maybe.
Very good, thank you. More anything?
Yep.
Bob, thank you very much. Thanks for the.
My pleasure.
The overview and again, like all of the committees we talked to tonight, the amount of the work that such a small amount of people do is just incredible. And the town appreciates it most of the time, we appreciate it all the time, so thank you for your good work.
Well, I'll certainly pass that on if we have staff. Thank you.
I gotta leave some money, right?
I think this is your anniversary year too. You started in nineteen eighty-four?
Uh, no.
Yeah?
No, it was quite a bit later, well, nineteen eighty-four, if I had to think back, it might have been plenty of work that I was on. In the building department, I've, I've been there about eight years.
Oh, you know what, I'm looking at the wrong thing, okay. Yeah, twenty-fourteen, okay.
Yep.
So that's the last of the bunch we're going to do tonight, we'll look at the capital plan a little bit. But before that, we are going to do an update from Becky on the water resource commission and projects and the next steps. Becky, how are you?
I'm good, I'm well.
Can you come in?
Yeah, my pleasure. So I came in this time last year and provided this annual update. And I think the plan is moving forward to do more regular updates to the water commissioners, just so you can be a little more, a bit more apprised of what's going on in the water resources commission. I am setting out as chair as of next month, Bruce Aragonis will be taking over.
Well, thank you, Becky. You've had a great year.
It's been a, it's been a very eye-opening, interesting experience, and we've really, I think, gotten a lot of work done. And there's a lot more to be done, and there's a lot more to finish, these big kind of policy programs that we've put into place over the last couple of years. Bruce Aragonis will be taking over as a chair. He is down the hall, I can hear him riveting conversation about the water treatment plant, his team roughly right now, so I'll have to descend to do that. But, you know, his goal is to do the monthly or quarterly updates for the water commissioners, again, just so you know, we're already, um, asking questions, catching anything for us to do. So the first thing I'm talking about work is our water offsets program. So funding was approved for a consultant at the April town meeting, our consultant in summer. Kai Von spoke to them a couple of months ago at something else, and he was apologetic that, yeah, we really haven't gotten up and running and started on it. I don't know if anything, Jim, has happened since then.
Just that there's still one.
Yeah, so I was hoping to maybe set a, a target completion for this of October first, just to have a target date that we can meet, where everybody can be on the same page, at least in fruit and wine. This is an update that will be made if it, once finalized, it'll be an update to the water department rules and regs. So it won't need to report town meeting to be included. The other is the rebate program, which was approved a while ago at town meeting. We move the funding around from the water department, technical services department, and we presented the structure of the program to you all last year. Jim has been working on some draft applications, it's kind of, I've met some votes of it now. But again, you know, we're hoping to set a goal of March one.
Applications are going to be out.
Great, so for all of the different.
By now you've got the wash one down, that's a, a lovely sound.
Just flooding, right.
Yep.
Yeah, so we should be able to have that up and running, we're hoping before the spring and summer season, because it's really cheap though.
How's that going to be pushed out? Have you figured that out yet? Let, let us know about it.
Probably the easiest way to do it is put it on one of their bills. One of us will know.
And then maybe in mail, town meeting logistics will post that.
Yeah, we'll do the regular.
The regular, usually.
The, the taxes are going to be looked at, but the easiest way is put it in the bill.
And then another thing we were going to do through the bill was to start registering underground irrigation systems, which was part of, I think, the water conservation bylaw that was passed last year. And that was something else that was going to go through the bill, where you just kind of registration form, a date by which people were meant to register their systems. So I don't know if we want instead of those, Jim allowed to be doing two different building cycles, like the rebates.
Yeah.
And then the registration, hopefully that can be completed, so that would be six months for two building cycles. Is that in place?
Are we charging a fee to res, to, for the private well registration, or is it just sort of taking an inventory of what's up there?
So that was something to be determined, we could charge a fee in the bylaw, it says there would be a fee. So that's something that is going to be decided internally, water department DPW, how they want it to go.
So we're going to send a piece of paper out to somebody saying, how is the fee on your registration?
Tell us you're getting ground irrigation system.
And write check.
If we decide to move the fee.
Yeah, that, that was kind of our, kind of what I had to say.
In private irrigation or private well?
In, did I say private wells? I keep saying that.
Irrigation.
It's a irrigation. I know, I, I heard it was sent actually, yeah, that was yesterday.
We kind of had to say in reaction to only one without you telling me you had to pay them.
Right, right, that is how we planned it, that we would charge a fee.
We might, we might find you if you didn't.
You have an update, you have an update in front of you.
On cap deal.
If I knew if you don't, I'd charge a question.
Got it.
Got it.
Good.
So if we're going to do that, two building cycles would be planned, would that, was that six months or eight months? I forgot when they do it.
Are they go quarterly every precinct?
Okay.
So if you want, they get two hours precinct day, it will be over four months period.
So there'll be eight months for the end for rebates for the irrigation system.
Great.
Quarter, every three months, right?
Every three months you get.
Yes. So it could be, what was it, one of the, one of the?
So in, in four months, precinct day would get two.
I see what you're saying, got it. And I guess just one of my questions too. These three programs now currently being managed by the TA, and I just wasn't sure if maybe there's someplace, maybe house someplace better where it would be someone who doesn't have quite as much going on as chair does. So that's just something to think about, maybe if I don't, Jim, or somebody else.
Those are discussed somewhere, actually, stuff is probably how we, actually, you know.
Right, great. And the last thing I wanted to talk about was rainwater capture, three or four municipal fields. We have looked at that as a commission. And our, we've talked about it for years. And, you know, it's a, could be a great potential. We've got a lot of fields, we only have rain, none of them is being reused or captured on municipal fields, it could be great for demonstration sites. And it could be great for saving water. But every system is unique, every town is different, every field is different. So we fully support the concept, believe there's a lot of potential, but there's a lot more work that needs to be done to really figure out the nuts and bolts. And again, that's something that should really be housed with the town employee. We've worked with the recreation department, they're really interested in it, they've identified a couple of opportunities, so thinking you may be, possibly having DPW, water department, recreation, maybe provide some proposals to support, listen to details, having talked to other towns, how it might work, what would be appropriate for our town.
So is REIT taking a lead on that?
Well, this is my releasing of the, so however you kind of deem. REIT makes sense, right, because it was, it feels associated with DPW. In a lot of towns, this sort of work is overseen by the water departments or by the DPW. So we just, we have to figure out what makes sense for our town, something that needs to be figured out in general. So that's my opinion.
Great. Did you want to come on to the last one, or did you?
Yeah, no, I, I think, to kind of piggyback, I, I think you need to kind of make that determination. A, if this is something you want to pursue, if this is something that I think is worthwhile, it has to be assigned somewhere, because if not, it will, it will die. So to explore more and afford more, we have to come to that conclusion, who exactly is the best to put forward.
Jim, you have a comment?
And the issue with that, and I've had conversations with Mike Novak about it, is to water a field, you would have to have enormous storage tank. And if you're getting enough rain to fill the storage tanks, the field is getting enough water. So to, I don't know if that was a funny, I have to go back and look it up, but to water a field is a, and I know you've had conversations with him too, it's, it's a pretty big.
Sure.
Tank that you would use, it's not like the DPW, I think, has a ten thousand gallon rainwater tank that you use to water, wash the trucks, you give it to the communication to, to water islands, but to do a field, that's, that's a pretty big undertaking.
It could be supplemental supply, right, I mean, it would have to be supplemental supply because weather being what it is, you can't guarantee that you're going to be able to water it at all.
Right, but, yeah, it's not enough to do it, it's not enough.
Right, well, I guess it leaves our conversation, right, and then the research.
Right, so I've talked to, to Novak as well, yeah, to your point, it's, it does have to come down if we're going to supplemental, it's really for two or three months, like you have, you can't for sixty thou, sixty thousand gallons is completely magic number to do two baseball, what's thirty thousand for quarter range three times, I've done the math multiple times. Are you going to do it all a year? No. Can you do it for, for two, three months? Sure. That's all you need it for, when there's a drought for two months, you're not going to do it, it will, is it going to be perfect? No. Forever, no, it's never going to be perfect. So try to get things, because that's what consultants tell us, they want the perfect field for Foxborough and for the NFL. Right, not for first grade, for other visitors, right, so it's a second basis to the first. So that's part of it too, is that when you look at all just as consulting that person's, oh, you need to have half a billion stores, you know, some of other communities do, that's not what people, every other state, member of the town, done it. So it's definitely possible, it's definitely there, we just need to build and actually.
Do we have examples of, you know, your initial research, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I ask a question. Do we have examples from your initial research as to how a town is doing it?
So there aren't a ton, it was, I don't have any of that in front of me, but yeah, there was some initial research done, there's a good amount that's done in the Ipswich River watershed. And similarly, where they kind of had this plan for it to do X and it ended Y. So there's a lot of learning from that. I don't know if anybody locally that is, but I, I will be missing, we can share that if we check it off. But again, thinking that would be once, one of these departments has a sense of what might, what field might be appropriate, what the facilities are there, then they can start to talk to other towns and really start to get that information together.
Yeah, I was thinking the same thing that Moore was, if we had some sort of, I mean, and I don't think this is out of the realm of a water resource committee to come back and say, here's, here's kind of what you need, under the parameters that Andrew's talking about, we don't want to water the field all year round. We need, like you said, a month or two of, in those off years when we've got a drought, how big of a tank to need, how much does it take to water a field for a month? Because I saw some report the other day, that's a lot more than I thought, in terms of just gallons of water. And then we can see, you know, then it would go to REIT to say, okay, which fields would you do it on?
Right.
And where would we pilot it, to see if it's, if it works.
So I think they're already thinking about that.
Yeah, who's that?
Um, was it Nick?
Yeah, Nick there, REIT.
Freya, yes, Chair?
Sure.
Um, we briefly discussed it in one of their meetings a few months ago. I think their biggest thoughts were the central field or the field behind gates, but I think there's a lot of question about what's going on with, at the old gates. So there's a lot of other questions not related to water about some of the recreational fields.
And just Freya, just for those, name and address.
Uh, yeah, Freyshley, Willamette, Westfield.
Right, yeah, I think what we have to do is take baby steps, right? Pick a small field that's usable and try a program on it and see what, you know, how good it is.
Yeah, so I think it'd be appropriate, you know, REIT, DPW to choose that field and start to crunch that.
Right, and you would, you would then be able to say, okay, it's field the size, needs this kind of system, and I've seen it in.
Sure.
Where I've offered that.
Yeah, but I mean, also the, the, the departments that manage those fields, I think should be as involved in that number crunching, because they understand all of that, those nuts and bolts that are there day to day. So we can do it, but we'll, we have our theoretical, right, we're basically looking at models. So I think you, tapping into people who are actually maintaining these days a day would be more effective.
Right?
Yeah, I think in some of the conversations too with REIT and, I think they, they also want to make sure that we're serious about doing it.
Yeah, it's time.
Because we have, we have voted on it, so are we going to do this and we're going to say, no, we're not going to. But the twenty that, whatever it is for the capture.
We can't vote on something you don't know, but the cost.
Right, but I just, I think we need to just make sure it's clear that we want you to do it, because I can't speak for the board, but.
Well, I would think the board is, is, you know, clearly indicated that it's, it's a worthwhile investigation, but right to Moore's point, you can't, I'm not going to say a hundred percent us do this, you know exactly what we're, but the concept is a great, great idea, because we have drafts. We're wondering that.
Well, I guess where I would look at this is, I think the REIT department should probably recommend a field to pilot this thing and see if it works and spend a small amount of money on doing it. But it also strikes me as though, one of the questions I have is, so where is this water coming from? And if it's coming from, for example, I think a huge roof on the Old Gate School.
Right.
If there's some way to get water from that huge roof into some tank and then somehow or other go over to that little baseball field that always looks a little tattered. You know, and it wouldn't be a huge thing.
Right.
And the other place that I would at least think about, but I think it's much more complicated, is the Little League field down at Green Bush. Because once, and, and obviously that's three, four years down the road, but that to me would be an ideal place to do something, only because that land in front of that field, we don't know what we're doing with this. So if we want to engineer a solution for that field at some point in the future, then I'd like to see a small experiment done to see, you know, how it works and what it would cost.
Yeah.
Hey, any other comments? All right, great, well, why don't we get DPW, REIT, and you guys together?
Okay.
And see who wants to, what the next step is.
Okay.
And, you know, like Morris said, Nader said, if, if it's a twenty thousand dollar investment to, to water a field, you know, it's a good field and see if the town supports that.
Okay.
So any other questions for Becky?
Thank you.
Thanks for coming in for the update, thank you for all the work you guys did.
Thanks.
Wish me a long, 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 chairs, just, yeah. Thank you, we should recognize employees with thirty-five years of service earlier. Thanks for yourself.
Yeah, my pleasure, thank you guys.
All right, and next, uh. Next topic that we're discussing is openly and closely special town award. Managing the bylaw article, award of recreation for the Kevlar parking. Who's doing the comments here?
So if you recall, we passed a bylaw last town meeting, we're at camping, in, like, when you call back, we had people in campus, it was rejected by the Italian channels office for a couple of different reasons.
Uh, new council Kevin Freitag reached out to the attorney general's office and said, well, what can we do to explain the problem to them? This is what they came back with. It's much more limited in scope than what we had before. But it will address the issue of those people who were playing in campers and basically living in Cole Park for weeks at a time. So we thought it was important, uh, the day after the attorney general disallowed the bylaw, we had a camper back in Cole Parkway last fall, so they know they're gonna be back, so we thought it was important enough when we got this from attorney Freitag to bring it to and say, hey, let's open it up, let's put it on, so we have something in place this summer, so this doesn't keep happening. Again, it's very limited in scope compared to what we had before. It really just addresses mostly Cole Parkway. Uh, but I think Kevin's advice was, that's where we have the issue right now. This has been vetted, the attorney general says this shouldn't be okay, let's walk before we run, put this in place, and then we can try to add to it as the arises in the future.
Right.
They did.
Yeah.
Did they deny it or did they reject it? Did they give an opinion or is it just?
No, it was one of three page, and I think I sent it out there, but I can send it out again. There was different reasons why. Um, Potter was the homeless, Miss Iguana, Potter was, the fine was not defended, it was not too fine. In addition, even though the, it's a non-criminal disposition, the fine, eventually you have to go to court, it can become criminal, so you can't use that fine. Uh, those are the kind of high points of it. So again, Kevin was really proactive and said, hey, I think I could reach out to them and try to. The work. We talked about all kinds of other things. It was stickers, permits, that puts a very large burden on us. What do you do if your friend's coming down to want to vote on the weekend, he doesn't have a permit, or you live in condos and your mother's staying over? She doesn't have a permit, where you go get her, I didn't force it, if it's just a temporary permit, then the police don't have it, and they don't buy. So this was, uh, again, I think it's just kind of baby step to address, really the issue everyone addresses, these people in campers thinking that's the place they can just set up camp and stay for the summer.
Okay, all right, let's run through the, uh, you want us to vote on both warrants?
Well, you need to vote to open the special town meeting warrant.
Yeah, and add that.
And add that out, and then close the special town meeting warrant again.
Okay, why don't we start with that?
Sure.
Please.
Move that this law board re-open the warrant for the April term twenty twenty three special town meeting for the additional of one general bylaw article and subsequently close the article.
The warrant.
We did all ones.
Yes.
Okay. Second.
Second, I must purr, further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous, five to zero. So have we, uh, did that actually add the article?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Now we have to vote to close the special town, you want to?
Yeah, I want to.
Okay.
Very, very efficient.
Awesome. So what's the next step? I know, are we actually going to go through all the special town meeting articles and approve them?
No, you don't have to approve them, you just have to vote whether or not you want them to remain on the warrant.
Okay, so can everyone look at the special town, forget this? Any questions on the special town meeting warrant?
I can't find the board, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
So if we just close the warrant, I'm gonna, let's say, I have one article six. You have the regovernance, perimeter, the board.
No, no.
Yeah, you should, you should remove.
You just knock it off.
Oh, okay.
I don't understand it, but.
We have to open it add, but not to remove?
It's already on, so you can just take it off.
Okay.
And we've been taking.
But to articles, what has been going on?
There's a deadline to add articles to the warrant, when you close, we can't add, add articles anymore. And the board determines out of all the articles that have been submitted, what are you gonna keep?
You only have to vote to add and not to take out.
Great, okay, so special town meeting, any, you have any questions on anything there?
Uh, article eight can come off, we'll move that one. We already have that authority right here.
Why is it coming off?
We already have that authority to issue, uh, long-term leases on those properties.
Article eight?
Yeah, on the special. Leases to our properties.
Oh, special town meeting, got it.
Yep.
In your packet, you'll see a little note about, uh, article eight on special and articles coming in. And you also have a hard copy of all the articles, the leases and all the backups.
All right, so, uh, nothing around special town meeting?
I think.
All right, so special, do you want us to do the same, Nancy, for the annual town meeting?
Do you want to do the motion for the special town meeting first and approve that?
Um, well, no. I don't think so, because we haven't really discussed them all.
Yeah, there's, there's two motions.
But we're not voting on the actual, whether we like the article.
No, what you're voting on is to put them on the law.
Oh, okay.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
And there's two motions that Nancy prepared, one is the special and one is the annual.
Okay. Karen?
Yeah, I'm slightly confused. Um, so who is RG on new general bylaw? They're accessing.
Uh, that's your special counsel.
Sorry, Gallo.
Oh, Gallo, okay, got it. Thank you.
I believe that was discussed with the board in a meeting.
It's a lot. Wasn't?
Yes.
Yes.
Special town meeting.
Mr. Brown, I'm very.
Right, can I have a motion to accept the special town meeting warrant?
Look, please accept the articles one through seven and nine and ten as presented for the special town meeting warrant for April tenth twenty twenty three.
Okay, second, second one, Mr. Gibbidge, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is unanimous. Okay, so now we're gonna do the same for the annual town meeting in terms of whether we want to, I guess, potentially add or take off any things.
You don't have any, anything that you're done that needs to add anything?
Isn't.
So you can only take off.
Okay. Um.
And spoiler, nothing really changes until you get to article fourteen.
Mr. Chairman, you want me to address article nineteen?
Sure.
Yeah. Um, so article nineteen is the addition of people's data resolution. In fact, I did speak with the DEI committee last week. Um, they, they're in line that they want postponed because they weren't, um, prepared to rewrite, um, the language. Um, and they also want to take some time to meet with some different stakeholders throughout the community. Well, I think they think it goes past, they just want to do the right thing and do that outreach. So they are not asking us to put it on, but it does need to be as a voice so we can, but as far as the DEI committee is concerned, they're, they're willing to put it off another, whatever, town meeting.
Great, so can I suggest we remove article number nineteen? Do we have to vote on that or just when we say don't put that up, right?
At the end, you'll vote.
Yeah.
The whole thing.
And you probably wanted to remove article eighteen, which was the mirror of the one we just discussed for the special, I had in both places, if you know anyone.
Well, actually, that was a question I had, is, is there's one more.
Are you gonna? According to town council, when we talked about the, uh, particular recreational vehicle parking, it didn't matter.
Okay. I always thought, okay, can I just ask a question? I always thought anything new was supposed to be at the annual town, and special was just really clean up and.
I think the thought is, the special at an annual is a little bit different, like, no one goes to the special town meeting.
Oh, okay. I assumed you mean like at the beginning, but yeah.
It's kind of.
Yeah, and the special at the annual is, is if you try to stop right away as opposed to wait until July first.
Oh, okay, good point.
So it makes sense to leave.
To leave it as special, yeah, in accordance with the other bylaw.
Right.
Got it.
Okay.
Okay, so come on board, but number eighteen is really.
So if we want to discuss, um, so eighteen and nineteen will remove, I think we have, what about number twenty? So changing the clerk position from elected to appointed.
All right, so this came out of the blue to me. Was there some discussion about it that I?
We've had, I've had discussions with Tom Clark, who's in favor of this.
Clark, okay. Okay.
She was thinking of retiring, and then the market went, I think she has to work for nine or three years.
The next.
But from a practical standpoint, uh, Tom Clark has to leave from town because they're elected. You become in a situation where you're electing someone who has absolutely zero experience in doing the most important thing that we do, which is run elections. And one of my other towns, uh, the assistant Tom, the Tom Clark retired, the assistant Tom Clark was running, someone else was running. And the assistant said, well, if I don't win, I retire too, which means there would be no one in the town's clerk office who would ever run an election, ever done anything. So that was the genesis of this, and I had long discussions with Kathy about it. She was a favorite, that it's something we should probably pursue because we could get to that point where she leaves, and we don't have anybody who can read. The top clerk that's ever done it, it's getting hotter and hotter, I know, after the last election, she was, she was like, I'm done, I'm done, and, uh, she decided, I think she's gonna run for one more term.
Uh, the charter review was outside of the permit to change elected or non-elected, we can discuss this as well, and look at other committees and and talk with Jim and him at the time too, and it was, you know, if the condition were formed, it would have recommended that this should be removed from election, for reasons etc. And charter review, do we have to put this on the ballot to get approved by the voters as well, so to the process?
Yeah.
Okay, after the state legislature, it's just like changing the charter process.
Okay, no, sorry. Um, town council, our town is listening to, so far.
Just use his initials, what's it, what?
Oh, yeah. When town coun- when town council reviewed it, it was after I'd already given it to Marain. Um, he said it doesn't need to be special legislation, it can be a town meeting vote followed by a ballot question.
Okay, so that information's on this email that I wrote for you.
Yeah, so that's, that's how I feel about it.
Well, I mean, it makes, it makes sense, and I, I've always wondered.
Excuse me, Chris.
Well, yeah.
I, I think we might have done this a number of years ago with the treasurer's request, so it's not like we haven't done this before. And it just seems to me as though there's so much mischief making going on in the world of elections now that something that ensures that we're being professionally managed is better.
Well, that, that is actually the, also, the flip, flip of that was the article. So if it's appointed and the town administrator is making commitment and has an agenda, it's the thumb on the scale, that's, I mean, those are the things at the same time.
Get rid of that select board, you know?
Yeah, you elect somebody and, and they could run on a.
So who would appoint them?
Is it clear in this or no?
Um, I, you know what, I can look up the statute, I'm sure it's, it, the statute is listed. I don't know if it's the select board appointing or I am, kind of history of.
But because the treasurer is appointed by the chair, by the town administrator, I think.
We.
No, that was.
You were planning to appoint the treasurer and you appoint the finance director.
Okay, well, then I would think that would be.
And that's it, I appoint to every other position.
Same pattern, right? He's a.
And you, and you said the town clerk has to be a town resident?
Right, now they do, yeah, to be, to be elected.
To run.
To run, okay, so, okay, because in my mind, if we appointed, then that would, it would have to pull people that have the experience.
We have to. Right now, your town clerk is asked, we know it's five bill of present town.
Yeah, exactly, okay.
You, we'd be fortunate that we have a town clerk that is eminently qualified, he does a great job, but, um.
Right, right, well, they've always worked in the office and then.
Yeah.
Um, uh. So I'm, I'm not opposed to it being in an appointed position, but I don't like feeling rushed to make the decision the day where, like, this, this should have been discussed in another meeting.
It can, it can go off to a, we're not hiring for this all day.
Well, we, at the time, well, warrant opened close to December, so I had to put placeholders in. So that's why we're having this discussion as to whether I want to.
See, I could go on to a special in the fall.
No, I, I, and I'm not, well, I'm, let me think it through a little bit, but I, I just hate when I'm there and it's eight thirty at night and, okay, we have to make a decision on this right now, we're, we should have talked about it three weeks ago, and then no, we're already there.
But we're just deciding whether to keep the placeholder here, we could.
Yeah, but once it's there, it's there.
Good idea.
You can, we can, yes.
So is the urgent, the urgency was that we were losing our, our, our town clerk to retire, that is not the case now?
Well, that, that wasn't the urgency, I mean, it was just in conversations with her, she's not staying forever.
You want to correct. Correct.
And is she up for reelection this year? Is that?
Uh, I think she's gotten.
Why?
I think she's got another year.
You know what I mean?
I think she's eligible for retirement in twenty twenty four.
And it is a.
They'll let her run.
It is a cycle point.
Annual. We're saying.
There's a slot for.
Selectable point.
That's interesting.
Forty one, section four, forty eight.
We think that.
Okay, well, what is the, what is it?
They were worried about that.
So I think I'd like to think about it a little bit, but why don't we put it on the warrant, Karen had a good point, we could just IP it if we don't want to.
Once we get the.
You can also take it off the warrant before the following March.
Yeah, you have one time.
I mean, before it's finally posted, you can say, you know, we've decided now, a discussion, we don't want to do this now.
Right.
On that will review, that will be on March then.
I'll squeeze the deadline.
Right.
Talk about.
Because you're gonna vote these at the next meeting. Well, not the next meeting, but in February.
In February, you have to make your.
When do they have to be voted, February seventh?
Will be.
The other, or the other February meeting, depending whatever that is.
Yeah.
Will we be, you'll have a documentation to the next meeting, that, or whether it's next meeting or next.
February seventh, what kind of documentation?
What the actual, uh, warrant, oh, do we have that?
Yeah.
Oh, it's in there, yeah, mine, I think I have it in there.
All right, so let's, uh, the last one discussed would be twenty one, what is that actually, what is that?
I don't know, I, I have no idea, I, I was told to make sure that we had it here for four on the audit, so I put it on there, but now it's also on the community presentation, so I didn't know if it could go away.
Yeah, it's, it's a CPC project, beginning, CPC is recommending funding for it. So it's not, I mean, not separate.
Anyone have any other thoughts on that?
Um, by the way.
Well, again, there's no other CPC, they.
There's a CPC article, ours.
Yeah, so I mean, there's no other other CPC articles in, yeah, where are they?
Over.
Article twelve.
Oh, I'm here. So why would we not, I'm just naming that?
It is.
That's what we're saying.
Oh, okay, okay. The warrant opened close to December, so at that time, December, yeah.
Okay, sorry, I just caught it.
So are we all in agreement, we're gonna get rid of eighteen, nineteen, and twenty one?
Yes.
Yes.
So we're giving seventeen articles on the warrant?
Eighteen.
Come on, eighteen?
Eighteen, it's a special.
Wow, you tried to warn a special. All right, can I have a motion to, um, accept the annual town meeting warrant omitting articles eighteen, nineteen, and twenty one?
So.
Second one, Ms. Cantfield, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it's unanimous.
So it's motion by Mr. Vignani?
Yes.
Second by Ms. Cantfield?
No, no, I said it. Someone moved it, Karen moved it.
Karen Collins moved it, I second the next, the debate.
Okay, the next, uh, item for discussion in the morning tonight is the the trustee of twenty four capital plan of seven million, seven hundred nine thousand forty, four hundred eighty dollars.
Jim? So, um, not sure how much detail you want to go into on the gap hole plan. Highlight, the only borrowing on the gap hole plan is borrowing for water line replacement. Kevin actually wants to speak for that a little bit, when we go with the gap hole plan. My recommendation was the seven point seven billion. Capital budget committee recommended not funding the stormwater at a hundred fifty thousand dollars and not funding, uh, money pickup trucks for the DPW at seventy five thousand dollars. Most of the large projects on the sewer side were not recommended. We're in the process of doing a facility study on the sewer treatment plant, didn't make sense to approve some large projects, then have something else come out that's more important. So in a way, the facility study should be out this summer. So in a way, the facility study should be out this summer. So that is impressively, that would be funded on the sewer side. We can have that at the fall town meeting.
Okay, let's, um, let's just run through them real quick. So I'll, I'll just rattle off. If we need, if we, uh, capital plan gave us an overview, but there may be some of the law more details on which we can earmark and talk about it at a different time if we want. Um, on the sheet that we have here, it doesn't say how it's being funded, like, uh, for instance, there's four school projects, hundred fifty thousand technology, hundred sixty-five thousand for a HBC for the high school, um, eight hundred ninety-eight thousand for a high school locker room, two hundred sixty-five thousand dollars for a small gym, and flooring replacement of water duct for two hundred eighty-five thousand dollars.
So if you actually, in your draft, any income in work? It's all up here, and it has all the funding sources with it.
Do I have that piece of paper?
You can have it because I didn't know you had asked for it that specifically, but I can certainly make copies for you.
No, wait, I have this in here that I could just
No, you have it, you have it overall summary.
It's in your, um,
It's in
It's in the back.
On page thirty-two, Tony.
The, the entire plan with the exception of the water pipes are from some sort of cash. Free cash, contained earnings, uh, sewer revenue, water revenue. The only borrowing is for the water pipes. That's it. So we started off the year with a balance of just over five million dollars in free cash. We spent roughly six hundred thousand at the special town meeting in the fall. We have about four thousand that'll go towards the special town meeting for unpaid bills in the spring. And then there's almost three point eight million in free cash put towards the capital plan. And that's the new balance of about four hundred fifty thousand dollars in free cash. That's the main source, uh, we're using. About seven hundred seventy-five thousand with water enterprise, contained earnings. About three hundred seventy-five thousand dollars store enterprise, contained earnings. Under a hundred, uh, transfer station and waterways, contained earnings.
So does anyone have any questions? Like, I don't know anything about these actual projects of, uh, small gym, high school, what that funds going to, but will the school, when they do their budget, will they explain these things?
Yeah, so the, the school items that are recommended, the technology, a hundred fifty thousand, which is an annual item from the school. Uh, HVAC controls, the high school phase one, they're going to replace all the HVAC controls, uh, to update those. The high school locker room, which is the second phase, we've been working on that, uh, right along. And then water tank flooring, small gym was not recommended.
Oh, it's not recommended?
The classroom is not recommended.
Okay, and the high school locker room, is that, that's not expansion of it, that's just re, re advocating it?
It's, it's redoing that. It's redoing the boys locker room, the girls locker room, and providing teen rooms for both boys and girls.
In the same space?
Same space.
And there's a third phase, right?
Who's gonna ask that?
Third phase coming. Third phase, another million dollars back.
And what is that doing? No, phase three is doing that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Any questions on those?
Yeah, I have a question about the technology.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what does that budget include, Jim? Does that, I, I, I'm beginning to feel like there's being money spent on technology that is really curriculum. I mean, is it just hardware or is it also, you know, when you think about the library, having to buy these expensive books that are on, uh, online, it's costing them a lot more. Is that a hardware because it's capital? Is that a hardware budget?
Most of it, when I look at it, it's mostly hardware, display panels, smart boards, Chromebooks, laptops, cots.
It's not a budget.
It's, it's almost all stuff as opposed to
So they're paying for things like curriculum instead of buying hardcover books now, they're buying software.
That's not products.
That's part of their operating
Yeah, that's not products. Not that I can say it.
Right.
Um, thank you.
Engineering, the only one is the two hundred grand to the offshore production. Facility management
No, that's not true. Okay, um, sorry, there, there's the stormwater system, which capital did not recommend?
Did I recommend?
Oh, I was
That's under engineering and I
Okay, I can use it again.
Yeah, I, I object to removing that. It's probably, I, I think that their objection to that, I think they were probably, because there was, that they felt it was a operating expense. I don't think they're wrong about it, but we need to be able to find us the work needs to be done.
That was my point to them. I said, that's a conversation we can have, but it's gonna have to happen later. Because the budget's already done, the capital budget's already done. This is something we have to fund. It's been funded out of capital for as long as we've been doing it. But if we want to have that discussion, that's fine. That's the next year's budget. So by, we actually, this is something that has to be done.
Right, and where is MS four?
That is the MS four.
What's, where, where is the, where's the system? Like, what areas are dealing with?
Yeah.
So, so the, the MS four is all our drainage structures all around. We have to sample all the outflows for, it's a federal man, mandated item. We have to check all the outflows. We have to sample if there's phosphates in the water, what, where it's coming from.
So it's not, it's not building the system, it's
No, it's, it's, it's examining the system that we have and then saying what we could do, you know, uh, to improve it.
So can we have a, are we all in favor of doing that? I know the capital brought up an issue that maybe it could move to a different operational budget, which is really just, you know, pushing money around. Um, but we're all good with, with that. All right, then we've got the time off facility plan, uh, years three through seven for four hundred seventy thousand dollars. And then fire department is replacing a dive truck for eighty-two thousand. Um, highway is replacing one, two trucks for seventy-five thousand dollars each. The new sidewalk machine for a hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars. And the two hundred thousand dollars that we put into roadways and sidewalks and what have you. There was one discrepancy there with one of the trucks, capital did not approve, but the town administrator did. Um, what's the sidewalk machine? Is that the cleaning?
That's the small tractor that goes down the sidewalk and plows the road.
It's not, right, it's a plow, it's not a sidewalk made of machine.
No, it's not a sidewalk made of machine. It plows the road. I mean, it can also be used, but don't
I'm an actor.
You can sweep, you can sweep it, you can saw it or whatever else.
What's the thought on the other truck?
Uh, yeah, I just have a question. I thought that the reason why the capital planning committee said not to recommend it was they just didn't think they should recommend it. They, they did not, in my opinion at least, give a, a really good reason, such as the other trucks have ten million more miles on them or something. So I, I, could anyone tell me what their rationale was? I wasn't in their meeting.
I couldn't say. I have no idea what their rationale was.
Yeah, I was, I was in the meeting, I confused them with their rationale.
Yeah, basically, yeah, they basically were like, that's a lot of trucks. We don't need that many. That was the rationale.
And I thought that was
Yeah, we're buying eleven trucks.
Yeah.
So.
Is it eleven or nine?
Uh, Well, if you count the dump truck.
Well, it was a fire
Pickup truck, dump truck.
Fire, was there a fire truck in, uh,
A dive truck.
Dive truck.
Lumber master truck, pickup truck, lawn sander truck, Chevy silver truck, utility.
You know, buying vehicles in the, uh,
And other ones, not just
Nine.
And the enterprise council, yeah.
But one of them's replacing a two thousand and twelve truck and one of them's replacing a two thousand and fourteen truck.
Yeah, it's ten years old.
Yeah.
Lots of wear. Well, I mean, I, I think they were putting it back on.
Are you driving any of those new trucks again?
Not those. Not two of those. They're really not very comfortable. I mean, at one meeting, they thought that we should have all the priorities, but then they got distracted, didn't put the money to any of the priorities, so.
So are we good with that truck? Um, information technology, we have, um, emergency upper E O C, the, uh, audio visual system refresh, three hundred thirty-five thousand dollars. And then the public safety complex, uh, computer workstations, uh, for sixty-eight thousand dollars. I think Mike went over a lot of that when we were standing here. Um, police department.
Can I ask you a question about that? Um, the video security system refresh? I guess my question is, or are any of these things eligible for the Comcast grant money?
The, uh, yeah, the emergency E O C one, there's some Comcast money being used for that.
Okay.
You're gonna fund it. It's free cash with pick access.
Okay, thank you.
How much are you using from that?
I moved the split in.
Fifty fifty?
Yeah.
Fifty fifty?
Yeah.
Your question about the high school locker rooms, phase three is the boys' team room and phase two is, um, making the existing girls' locker room the two boys' team room.
Team.
What's that?
It's a, a, a room for where the girls' teams gather, not just the locker.
Exactly what it sounds like. It's a room with benches where they go between
Period.
But do they have a lock? Are they losing their locker room?
They'll lose all the locker.
The girls didn't have a team room, so this, it's keeping them a team room and then renovating boys' team room in five days.
But the girls have a locker room, so.
Yeah, they just didn't have a team room.
Okay, police department, uh, some mobile radios and, um, CAD R S M replacement. What is that, um?
Computer and dispatches records for agents.
That's what it runs at.
For four eighty-eight. Um, public grounds, there's a truck there replacing a two thousand and five truck, a mower for fifty-one thousand and a, uh, new Toro Deck mower for a hundred sixty thousand.
The big machine that you see, uh, I think we replaced the engine in the last couple of years, it's
So those are the ones that are impacting the general, uh, the budget, not the enterprise funds. Correct, Nancy?
Yes.
That's a good cast.
And most of it is free cash. We're not bond, we're not bonding anything?
No, bar, no, general.
No bar.
General fund.
No bar.
No general fund, all right. All right, and then the sewer, um, cybersecurity, uh, I N I work for two hundred thousand dollars and a truck for ninety thousand dollars. Two thousand and eight truck. Um, transfer station, a pickup truck with a plow and sander. Is that new? That's not replacing anything, right?
It, no, it's to, it's to handle the, the transfer station itself so that we don't have to bring all the time in if it's on a overtime weekend, they can clean themselves out as well as do pre-salting.
Okay, and then the water department, uh, tenure, uh, I mean, the replacement cycle.
I asked you my question.
Yeah, let me just read this, so you know. Uh, truck for sixty-seven thousand dollars, waterman replacements for two point three million. And then, uh, uh, granular active carbon at the water treatment plant for two hundred twenty thousand. Um, that's what Steve went over the other day. That was booked. More.
Well, I just want to go back up, um, to sewer. Is the two hundred thousand, like, the design for the next year's, the influence freedom pump replacements, four million dollars? Like, are those two connected?
Sorry.
So, sorry, I'm a process, sorry. Um, so the two hundred thousand dollars that was approved both by you and capital for the, uh, I N I for point four to twenty-seven. Oh, no, so that's just I N I. So what's the four, the four million that you didn't approve and why didn't you move that forward? You just moved that out, Jim?
Yeah, again, the, the town approved several hundred thousand dollars to do a facility study in the sewer treatment plant. We haven't done that yet.
Okay.
It seemed premature to me to take a four million dollar project and say, let's do this, when a facility study could say, no, something else needs to be done ahead of that. Facility study is scheduled to be done this, by the summer. So if then it goes back and says, okay, that is the first priority, we can always put that back on in the fall, but it just seemed to be kind of chicken, you know, put the cart for the horse to approve maybe projects when you haven't done the study.
Actually, I had the same question on the two hundred thousand for the, for the I N I. So that two hundred thousand goes out, sorry, I'm looking at the, it's eight hundred thousand total, it's over four years. So is that, that is that, that can't just be work. Is that just design and other stuff or is that work as well?
It's like thinking, if anything, you need, there's lining pipes in short term, it's replacing manhole covers with the new special lawn type manhole covers.
Line up agents.
It's bringing in engineers to do engineering work. It's, it's pretty much everything.
So I guess my question could be, I mean, could that be accelerated if we, but, is there a limit on how much you could do if we spent three hundred thousand? I mean, I just
Well, we also have, how much
We could do, we could do a waste team So we've, we've been launching a project coming out now for I N I work. It's gonna be going up to bid in the next month. Um, so that'll, that'll be the big push to get that out. Then it'd be time to design the next phase of that. That's where I'm confused. So that we have million dollar projects and then two hundred thousand dollar I N I projects. So for example, when we paved Oceanside Drive, they weren't expecting, you know, we said we're paving Oceanside Drive. They used the I N I money to replace all the covers on all the manholes on Oceanside Drive in Turner Road, which was forty thousand dollars in covers to save, for example. Um, you know, we come across projects with this different I N I work and they take it out of that pool to help improve it. That can be Yeah, I guess, I guess I would have here, thinking that, I mean, so just, so does that one end up helping? Does it cover, is another stuff? But I just want to
Backfill jetting and cleaning, disposal debris, manhole replacement, sewer main inspection, smoke testing, monthly sensor inspections, certain steps, manhole structures, visual field investigations, lateral service replacements, salt pipe lining installation, pressure testing, excavation, and bypass pumping, all the things that are happening.
Most of the projects can be much bigger, uh, they'll, they're done separately. And the bandwidth really has, we can't do three of those at once because it's not
Two hundred thousand, like I said, it's a day-to-day
That's, the day-to-day step, not I N I was waiting for that.
And then the, the big I N I projects are
Sorry, yeah, I was
David, just name, I mean, that was, like, that's really not capital. I mean, it's, it's oranges and, I mean, apples and oranges, but it has to go somewhere. We need the money and
Well, forty thousand dollars of the manhole covers would be
That would be, it's capital, right, right, but smoke testing.
Well, it's usually part of bigger projects.
If you find that the smoke is coming out, you need to, yeah, yeah.
And then they go
I, I just, yeah.
I think that's probably the most, one of the most disconcerting things that happens to people is when we do a smoke test and all of a sudden, smoke coming out of their toilet.
All right.
Sounds like one. Honey.
Right, so replacing water mazes in here for three point three million.
So Kevin would like to address the board on that. Um, something just came up in the last couple of days.
Make a call.
On a very high level, the, the gas company wants to replace a gas line on Jericho, which would be a major inflammation of the road. That water line also needs to be replaced, but we have a budget for that. Kevin's thoughtful, that tear up the road for the gas line, we might as well put the water line at the same time. And then we'll try to get the gas company up on, on the chip and to repaint the road, so.
So, Thunder, I didn't even need to wait around. He was From where to where and how old are the
So, so what we have is we pre-designed, we've got a bunch of roads designed and ready to go up the bid. We don't have the funding behind it. They include Edgar, Fay, Garden, Holly, Irving, Jay, Norwell, Longley, Ermine, and Jericho. So we were just notified recently, what we're using our water funds on now is to do the project on three X, so that we can replace that water line as we're doing the plant. Uh, we're doing two. We're doing the raw water line and we're doing a new water line that feeds that whole entire area and we're replacing it with that line pipe. But the gas company came to us the other day and said, we want to put four crews in situ all summer and we're gonna be replacing gas line everywhere. So we're just reviewing that. So just we need four more crews working everywhere. Um, we are going to set up a meeting with them, discuss the work that they want to do. Some of them are on some recently paved streets. So we're gonna be asking them to do complete repaying of some of these streets. But we're digesting it and seeing how serious they are. Um, but one of the roads that they do have on there is Jericho, which is about three thousand six hundred twenty-five feet. So we did a quick estimate on what it would cost. And obviously, if they're gonna be replacing the gas line, which the last thing we want to do is go open Jericho up there all summer. Um, but if they're gonna replace the gas line there and then have to repay the road, we would like to redo the water line at that same time. And that's why we
And that's why we were gonna ask for, I talked to Nancy about it, we don't know what we have to fund. We're not sure how the water prices are gonna come out because as as we've said before, a lot of the pipe and everything else is still doesn't become it and it's wanted to get us us investment plan to get it. So we were gonna ask for, because we weren't doing the Dolan wellfields to put some addition. We're not stopping, we're just falling off, we have right here.
I guess I raised land.
Nope, it was, no, um we we had, we're not, we're not not doing them, we're postponing it until such activity we can bug anyone, so we had to focus on what we were gonna get done, so what we were thinking is um adding an additional million dollars towards the water work so that we can do Jericho vote at the same time. And was I in money wise?
Yes.
So where, where in the hell were the pipes?
So the pipe is basically from First Parish, um that's, it it goes all the way down right up to the edge of Cedar Point. Um it's three thousand six hundred and twenty five feet, it's a ten inch A C pipe that was put in nineteen forty one.
Wait, do you?
It's not for Beaver Dam.
Beaver Dam, backwards, that's that all.
So it's from Beaver Dam all the way down to Cedar, all the way to the.
Oh, just go.
Um starting to lie forth.
Hi.
Um. And it's a sixty eight, eighty five year old pipe.
Hey, Ed.
Yes.
How much of this is related to current news about how bad gas is for your home? Are they rushing to, or is there a real reason to do this? Is it, I mean, I will say that I think it was the gas company that tied up River Street, Norwell for over a year.
Two.
Okay. It was.
They put it in, they did a roadmap, do it again.
It was extremely disruptive, straining disruptive.
Well, that's that's why I had requested a meeting with the employees so we can discuss these and know where allegations are gonna be.
Is that for new gas or replacing?
It's replacing the gas, what they're claiming is some of the gas is um metal pipe and they feel this rot and they wanna replace it. You know, once they pull the safety card, if they're worried that something's gonna blow up or go wrong, we have to give them a question, plus the bill, we don't.
Well, except for that, my question would be, can you, can it, that gas line be abandoned? And people go all electric?
Could, probably have some unhappy people on Jericho.
Well, I'm just saying, I mean, I think these are the questions we need to ask.
Need to ask everyone Jericho road?
No, 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 just us as board and to consider.
Well, why we, I mean, other than that it being summer, why wouldn't we want them to replace their gas room?
Well, I I don't know, I don't know if you've been reading the news lately, but there's some serious questions about gas, the use of gas in houses. So I don't know how much that they're trying to accelerate what they're doing.
No, this was on the books last year and I told them if they were gonna do Jericho Road, they were gonna have to repay the entire road themselves and pick up that entire cost and they balked at it and they might have reached out to DPU against me about that, so that's part of it, we're gonna have a lot of discussions. So this has been going on for about two years, I wasn't too keen on ripping up Jericho Road.
Would this be funded with just additional bonding there?
Yeah.
Yeah, would increase it.
And can the water fund afford it?
If you're if you're not moving forward in the immediate, like two to three years with bonding for the Dolan wellfield to already build that into your rates, so that either covers this borrowing or the three million water mazes that you have and fills into your rates that are already removed and when you increase the rates in fiscal twenty two, you add an additional two percent for debt that wasn't tied to any project specific. So yes, and you have, as you remember from the budgets, you have ninety thousand dollars of estimated receipts for fiscal twenty four that aren't allocated and we could go back and put into the short term debt if this project were to go forward.
So how much money are we gonna save by doing this? I mean, if we're, what we're doing is we're taking this project and we try on the projects.
No, this project was in the queue because we've had two breaks on it, we probably had two or three breaks on it in the past year on Jericho. So that's been moving to the high part of our list.
Okay.
One of the things that we noticed when we take a look at it after the break and we get samples and see where it is, the walls of that pipe, I don't wanna say they turned to codwood, but the trenchite starting to, starting to corrode, so that was, we'd already designed to do it.
Lead with that next time.
It would have been the top of next year's projects. Also, we're doing the three A pipe, it would have been the top of the year.
Nineteen forty one, we're gonna rip up the street twice. It would have been done the next, I mean, there's, we don't have nine million for Dolan this year, this is one.
And we'll get the gas company to chip in for the cost every day.
For the, whenever they have the road twice to use the road. Cause we may not maybe we pour some gas.
But once they come in and say it's a hazard, then they just stop digging, there's nothing we can do. And they do that, I don't wanna say quite often, but if they, you know, get a little tipped off, they say, oh, it's leaking, it's a, it's an emergency, I'll cut the backups. And at that point, we said, okay, dig away.
All right, any other questions?
So you need to, if you wanted to, so you need that, amend that to two point three million to three point three million.
So is cap, does that count as capital yet?
So the two point three is the capital, a lot to the back for the extra million, which I don't think will be a problem.
What extra million?
So under.
Under the water deployment, water main replacement, it's a two point three million dollar bar and Kevin's asking you to increase that to three point three million.
Oh, I thought the two point, so it's only a million dollars to do the road? I thought I thought the full two point three was that, just that project.
No, no, that's.
That's, that's gonna be mostly used to replace the service line on three A, not the water tube.
Gotcha, and then if we have additional funds that are over, we may lead into some of these other streets that we already have designed to just, just to continue the project because, you know, luck, this project may come in lower than expected. You know, fingers crossed, we we worked with Mass Highway, originally they wanted a ten foot separation between the pipes. We've got it down to a four foot, so we can do it on one trench, so hopefully we're we're saving on that and then, you know, we're still talking to the state about the full, full with the.
I think I should be paying for what's the three A, not quite the board then.
So, very smart question, so are we looking to um move a number that's ten million seven oh nine? Or, oh actually no, we're just adding, we're adding one million, so we're eighty million seven oh nine, yeah, sorry. Here are three million.
Kevin, remind me, did you do follow my writing?
Yes.
Yeah.
But we.
I'm sorry.
Ball road was already done?
Ball road was.
Cause that was one of the horrible ones.
That was one of the horrors, that's.
Yeah, this one road we've got, it was, it's horrible.
One question, um so where is Amara, water main replacement?
Pause.
Pause.
Put out enough funds and that's gone through the roof, Dolan's gone through the roof, so we're gonna sit out and we're meeting with the water staff to say, okay, we need to get kind of a new estimate on the reservoir project, so we can say Dolan, reservoir, Amara, figure out which one's gonna give us the biggest bang for the buck.
Yeah.
The conversation with Dolan right now, as the board's aware, the water has PFAS in it, so the conversation is, is it more cost effective to put a PFAS filter at the well or incorporate some PFAS treatment, the treatment plant, pump the water back, the treatment plant, what would that cost? So I think that's something, I am also getting right now.
We're taking that truck.
Do we need a motion on the number for the capital?
I was just looking at that, we can, we can review, discuss and vote. So if everyone's good with the plan, we can have a motion to accept it and just make, add the million dollars to the.
And who's that?
The truck suit.
And yes.
So if.
The trucks are.
Yeah, if if just to uh prove the capital plan is recommended by the town administrator with the addition of then that would include this phase four and the truck.
Okay.
Um, did you go to capital, we got, we didn't have a chance to talk to capital planning about that issue tonight.
No, we'll go to shut up. Those those are the type of projects that they, to start, we like, so.
I know, but should be for.
Kevin, we got very lucky on getting three or four trucks, um we found three or four trucks. Got much steel um in the last month, so the trucks are.
A little sticker, right?
Yeah, we thought, we, we just bought another one today, it was coming out and nice, pile me up, so we get another one, we will take it.
Mr. Chair, you have a motion?
Please.
Oh, I need that the board approves the capital improvement plan that's recommended by the town administrator with the addition of one million dollars to cover the space in the water case, totally eight billion seven hundred nine thousand four hundred eighty dollars. I guess.
Second one is can you call the favor?
I have.
I, the junior, break it, Kevin, thank you. What?
I said water beans. I think that's the water beans, water beans, beans, that's what it was.
Thank you very much, and the and the gas company project looks like it's gonna be very significant if they're running in four, four crews to work.
I do a little.
They have one at Jericho, they have like a lot of like.
Fine, the next topic is uh review and discuss the GATRA changes. We have a green flyer.
Well, just very, I just wanna put something visual so you can see ahead in my report. Uh GATRA is gonna go on February first, probably point to point, which is what you see here. If you start at the top right, that's the the Harvard Community Center, then it goes down to Front Street, stops at C V S and stops at Village Market, the Gulf Force, Green Bush, Town Hall, that goes all the way up to North Situate, on the way back, it stops at the library in Central Park, and then that was the old Council on Aging. Ridership is very low, a lot of that is because their service is very undependable, people don't take it, so they don't come, they don't come, so don't we take it? What they are going to move to on February first is this, which is their GATRA on demand seacoast. Instead of being a bus stop on the bus line, if you are within that shaded area, you can call GATRA, I'll go onto their app, you can go GATRA Go on your mobile device and get an app and you can have that, they will pick you up at your location and take you to any location within that shaded area. So it's a much larger area that they'll be covering. It is much more convenient for people that are not standing by the side of the road in the hot of the cold, waiting for a bus to come. Uh it is two dollars instead of a dollar seventy five, but the month of February will be free. So um kinda hard to explain without the visual, but really it's almost like an Uber Lyft by GATRA in that particular area. So they feel strongly that it will provide better service and that people, when they know about it, will take it more, especially the elderly and we talked to the Council on Aging, I know two dollars doesn't sound like much, but then maybe some people, that two dollars is a lot of money. And we can pop this up and then maybe they'll help somebody out with it, that can't afford the two dollars, but uh give it a shot, I think it's, it is much better, actually, it's one of the things that people always wanted, that GATRA doesn't go to the beaches. This it's Peggy Beach and it's Lighthouse Beach. And you'd be able to go to uh Museum Beach also on there, it's potter.
Can we expand the gray area? I mean, this, they've always had to do this.
They have had a pickup in the house, suppose.
No, they've always had, it's part of their, their regulations that they have to do this.
Have to do what, Tom?
They have to drive you within the area if you call up a question. But I think it's, this, this system that we have right now isn't working.
And can we, can we expand the area, we asked on that, I think they said, let's walk before we run into a type of demand we have and then we can talk about expanding the area.
It's gonna make sure it's equitably.
Because the other dealership that I had is, if you look at the GATRA total system map on the social, everything connects except Situate. Situate's its own little, doesn't connect to Mossfield, if you get to Mossfield, you can get all the way down to Plymouth and and down to the Cape, but you can't get from Situate to Mossfield on GATRA.
Can you narrow with this plan?
No, not, not to stop. That's one of the things that I wanted, again, they said, we'll get to see what the ridership looks like.
I think it's great, I just wonder why they're not going to the beaches like Miami.
But Kevin doesn't wanna put Miami.
What?
That's a turf beach, she doesn't wanna.
I wanted to stop it, I wanted to stop the Miami road.
And what are the hours?
Same hours, if they have service now.
So nine to five.
Yep, and you can, you can make them weeks in advance, if you know that you go to work every day, eight o'clock, you can make your whole week's appointments at the same time.
I think it's really important to stress that it's not just a nap. Um it's not, there's, there's phone access to book in questions, because I think the ridership, and just speaking with Lorraine and some of the comments that are coming from Town Hall, you know, the population that uses utilizes this, aren't necessarily phone savvy, mobile app savvy.
And they're gonna be doing a presentation at the COA, I believe, this week.
What if they can get little cars to hand out with, with phone numbers?
Their flyers, I love that little card, their flyers.
Yeah, what?
Does it fly here and notice on the information session if we have?
Yeah, I'll need it.
Maybe eighteen to uh request the, I'm just, I think you got a virus.
Sorry, I think you do.
You what?
Maybe eighteen to request a.
Thanks.
That's a solid transportation.
Sorry.
A bit of a man.
I was just going down the.
I was just thinking of.
Um Jim, did you discuss in the um? One of the things that is always frustrating me is that GATRA's schedule is not tied to the T station. Like, where are they gonna be parking the car where the waiting person to call, like, is if they were at one of the T station or the, you know, at the train stations, when that train arrived, everything new was gonna be there every day. That's the, that is one of those frustrations.
But I mean, the biggest frustration with GATRA, they had a lot of problems with the operator, so you do, the bus is gonna be at seven thirty, there's no bus. So after a couple times, you just don't go.
You give up, right, right.
But if you're taking the train home, the bus doesn't have to sit there, you just say, I'm gonna be on the seven forty five train, and you picked up, the tanker's gonna pick you up at seven forty five.
But they still only have one vehicle.
To stop, yeah.
So how do you, if you, when you go to book seven forty five and somebody else already has it, does it say, no, you, the next available one is eight?
You can get shared rides depending where we are going, while they'll have to bring in additional resources.
Doesn't it take our kids to school?
Let's take it. Yeah, that's how you like to practice, oh my goodness.
That's right. And I get.
Okay, let's ask the way of which question, but I think this is a better model than what we heard.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
It's pretty good, I downloaded it.
I mean, if they're, if they're seeing each demand, then they'll have to put more resources there, you know, compared to the same demand.
Or they'll have to say, the next available ride is eight.
Yeah, it's like, it's like a little world level.
Yeah, it's boring, we're all.
They probably feel like they forget anywhere in that cycle, like fifteen minutes, you know.
I think it might be helpful to add, if they could, the Shaw's Plaza and Cohasset and the C V S.
Right.
Because those are truly very.
I think they can cross.
They, they can't cross the two.
Two years.
Another time.
No, not they, it's not even the farmer's got the right.
That's something I'm thinking in the next upstairs.
So I don't think, I don't think Cohasset's in the GATRA service here. So they will go in there.
Or maybe, I just wanna make sure medical buildings and stuff like that are, looks like.
Council on Aging has rise to Shaw's Plaza, yes.
Oh, all right, okay.
Yeah, the Council on Aging still has their bench, makes schedule checks, they'll show us, we're a market basket.
Good, okay.
I'm gonna market basket, you understand?
No, market basket.
That's what Jim takes.
I think that, yeah, take my market basket.
The one to market basket.
All right. So thank you very much for that, that's great. We'll just publicize that. All right, next topic, well ahead of schedule, is a discussion on a one day wine and malt license. Is that a motion?
Move to approve a one day wine and malt license to Ladishland Dan Catering, for a project event, have February twelfth, twenty twenty three, four P M, twelve to eight. Second.
Second, Madam Conley, further discussion, seeing none on favor.
I.
I.
Mr. Emmett, are there any liaison reports today?
Probably two minutes, except minutes, but no liaison, no.
Okay.
It's not that one in the list. You can do it for one.
No.
Lorraine, don't get mad at me.
Oh, yeah.
Liaison reports? Of course, ones. You want?
I can do liaison, um just, so Jim, I wanna, I think you just wanna sit down and meet with Jim a little bit, you know, we talked about kinda connecting to my liaison A's or whatever I did, however we call it, any liaisons to. Um you know, D E I is gonna come and give us an updated report, some, on some of the.
Um, you know, DEI is going to come and give us an updated report, some, on some of the feedback that they've gotten from all the departments. And one of the things they were talking about, which is no news to any of us, is the struggle to, you know, bring in public employees to Situate because you can't afford to have here, right? So within, how do you attract them? So then the formal housing trust team is looking at new ways to look at or raise a different type of a formal housing trust to add, to start to pursue, which would give preference to public employees. So I, I do want to like sit down with you and push that out a little bit. Martha's Vineyard did it for the school teachers, um, because they couldn't attract good staff. So they did a formal housing, um, complex units out there specifically for, um, school employees. So I think it's just something to take a look at so we could.
Yeah, well, generally, if you're creating a housing, you could determine who has preference.
Yeah, we can preference, right?
Right.
But we just kind of want to talk about, you know, where are those locations that we could take a look at in town? I mean, we know that, um, hey, well, we know that, you know, Gates is being looked at right now by, um, the Grantham group. You know, that act was yet, right? They're looking at.
No, we, we don't even know if it could be used for housing, so they're the ones who did.
They're, they're highly doubted, yeah.
Central Park, we'd say, we'd take a look and see if this could be, be purpose, that's what we.
One of the elementary schools would probably.
I thought they should know, I mean.
No, they, they looked at, they came through, they want to bring their architect back. You know, the question is whether you can do it within the footprint or whether you have to expand the footprint to make it.
Okay. Anyway, I just wanted to share that, just kind of the thought process.
Good idea.
Yeah, good.
Anyone else?
Um, just to mention that on Sunday, Sunday the twenty-ninth, the, um, Historic Society is having a program at Mossleasing at one o'clock. Meet the caretakers. So the folks that live in the lighthouse and, um, Bates House are going to do a little presentation. Uh, the, uh, Cold Parkway Redevelopment Committee has had two meetings. And, um, Corey Miles, thank goodness for her, is working on a, a charge so that we can get, not what the committee is doing, but that we get RPO or engineering firms to reply to, to see what is possible to do. And I will say that, um, one of the questions came up, and I certainly didn't know the answer to it, is that where there are is private property, for example, in the war. Who pays to do whatever would be done, look at the edge, whatever. We know that we own Cold Parkway, but what we do in Cold Parkway will have an effect on everybody. So, um, I didn't know if there's, if they, you know, for example, would, if, if, if the town came to do the betterment, shall we call it, for the war, do you think it's possible that the private owners would pay a betterment for that or that they would have to give us public access? Which would mean they couldn't close that parking lot to public parking? I mean, there's a whole host of issues to, to think about. But, um, the committee's a good committee and I don't think any of us have any, uh, idea that we're going to solve this problem overnight. But, um, they're working, we're meeting once a month, so.
Great.
And Paul Markowitz, the ambassador from Pier Forty-four, has been meeting with people, I think he met E S C last night. And he's doing a great job trying to get out there and see as many people as possible, so.
And the photos of this weekend were evidence to the.
If I saw them, I would, oh, no.
Uh, so, at a meeting about sidewalks and talking about, um, progress from usually the initiative of the safe street and also kind of what the real criteria is and what we've accomplished and not accomplished. It is over half of the original project, projects have been done. So the plan now is probably just to simplify, just trying to be that many, more new projects. So, you know, just some stoppages, some other, we're already been on the list and reevaluate. Looking at Halloway, but there's also, Kevin, we're here, there might be some options that he's going to explore about just re-screwing. Possibly for bike lanes or other steps, we'll look into that, uh, in the interim. But we're also going to, um, come back and be more, have a prioritizedness of maintaining some of the sidewalks we already have as well, uh, as opposed to just adding, we also keep up the charity, helps with that stuff.
Any more questions?
Um, just the GATRA meeting, uh, which would be Thursday, January twenty-sixth at two P M in the senior center in the East, so we'll talk everything about.
And I know that there is a fundraiser for the Irish, um, sister city on the.
It's Irish heritage, I mean, it's.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes.
It's, uh, honoring Senator.
I think it's first week of.
Tony, you, you signed the, uh, agreement with the high school exchange and they're going in the next couple of weeks.
Oh, wow.
The Situate students will be going over the court every next couple of weeks.
They are?
Yeah.
How many?
I just saw a notice about a high school the other day. I'm not sure, that doesn't mean, it's great. That's what they have got for, it's not a whole some asset, but they got for a, a week or so on, and then that's, actually the Irish students, I mean, I saw that. A chupi sign, that's finally four years later, five, two years later.
From COVID now.
Yeah.
Well, which reminds me, if you could send me that, that project that they did on the.
Mara, you have this correspondence as well.
Oh, of course, yeah.
So I want to review this.
All right, just send me, just send me.
Yes. Send me the email.
All right.
It's not my life, I want to share with the Pier Forty, Pier, not Pier Forty-four, the, the Cold Parkway.
Yeah, yes.
Do we have two more? Uh, so two more correspondence, um, there will be a income tax return assistance program being held at the Situate Senior Center. Um, it's, um, the A A R P foundation will be coming in to speak, um, you do need to have appointments. Uh, so, uh, once you ever see unnecessary income tax filing documents, just call Situate Senior Center at five zero five, eight seven two two, extension two. And your taxes will be done on the same day and you should be prepared to return or wait to complete the process in person on that day. Uh, so if you have any questions, uh, you can call in to seven eight one, three five two, zero 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 four. Private assistance. And then on this Thursday, February second, there will also be a public information session regarding the, uh, new Situate Community Choice electricity program that we talked about, uh, that will also be at the senior center at two P M this Thursday and then also at six P M, um, this Thursday at the town library. Um, so, um, I'd like to give you all the information about the new electricity education program.
Motion on that?
Fix up the minutes for select board meeting held January tenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second?
Second, Madam Connelly, for the discussion, seeing none, on favor?
Aye, aye.
Aye, unanimous. A motion to adjourn and sign documents? Second by Mr. Goodrich, on favor?
Aye.
Aye, unanimous. Thank you, Seth. Thank you for filming.
You got it. Have a good night, everybody.